Okay, here we go. Let me do this. All right, just wanted to try that. All right, I'm calling the January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Board of Education to order in accordance with Government Code Sections fifty-four, nine-five-zero, et cetera, and Education Code Section three-five-one-four-zero, et cetera, at seventeen-hundred. Sorry, five P M., sorry. Okay, with that said, we're going to go ahead and be adjourning to closed session for the purpose of discussing matters expressly authorized by Government Code Section thirty-five, forty-nine point one, comma, fifty-four, ninety-five, six point eight, comma, fifty-four, ninety-five, six point nine-five, fifty-four, ninety-five, seven, comma, and fifty-four, ninety-five, seven point six, and we'll be discussing, number one, public employee per Human Resources Report, two, conference with labor negotiators, Dr. Mike Matthews, Superintendent, Dr. Rick Lopez, Assistant Superintendent, Human Resources, David Giordano, Assistant Superintendent, Business Services, in regards to C S E A, A P L E, and P L U M. Number three, we'll be discussing expulsions, the first being case number twenty-three, zero-nine, C three, and case number twenty-three, one, zero, C three. Is there anyone present who would like to address any of these items? Okay. Seeing none, we are adjourned to closed session at seventeen-oh-two, or five-oh-two for civilians. Okay, good evening, folks. I'd like to reconvene to regular session at eighteen-twelve, or six-twelve for some people. The report out of closed session included the board meeting to vote and approved the stipulated expulsion agreement between Placentia Yorbalinda Unified School District and the parents of twenty-three, zero-nine, C three. That motion was presented by Trustee Blades, it was seconded by Trustee Anderson, and the motion carried with a vote of five-oh. The second portion, the board met and voted to approve the stipulated expulsion agreement between Placentia Yorbalinda Unified School District and the parents of twenty-three, ten, C three. That motion was brought forward by Marilyn Anderson, seconded by Trustee Blades, and it was carried by a vote of five-oh. All right. Okay, folks, at this time, I would like to ask Trustee Frazier to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Will you all please raise?
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, we're kind of going to go out of order just a little bit here. We're going to do a general functions item. This is going to be item number one. I would like to make the request that we moved this item to the top.
So moved.
Thank you.
I think as long as we all okay it, we can move it without having to vote, correct?
Okay, is there a vote needed? No vote needed, okay, excellent. Okay, so the, I'd like to get a motion.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Preston Bang as the student board member for the second semester of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
I'll second.
Excellent. Let's go with, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, now, motion carries five-oh. And Dr. Matthews.
Preston, can you come and join me? Hello, sir, good to see you again. All righty, buddy, it's my honor to administer the oath of office to our new student board member, Preston Bang. He will serve on our Board of Education for the second semester of the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So first, let me share a little bit about Preston, actually a lot, because he's very impressive. Preston grew up in our district, he attended Lakeview and Golden Elementary Schools, Kramer Middle School, and now Valencia High School. As a senior, Preston serves as the Tigers as their A S B president. In this elected role, he has a long list of important responsibilities, including planning school-wide events and activities, exemplifying and raising school spirit, overseeing budgets, and much more. In addition to A S B, his senior year includes international baccalaureate and advanced placement classes, as well as extracurricular activities such as golf. I think he's taken a harder schedule than I took in my senior year, and he plays a better golf than I've ever played, so he's very impressive. In his free time, he works part-time at a local golf course and enjoys spending time with his family and friends. Following graduation and beginning in the fall of twenty-three, Preston hopes to attend the University of Pennsylvania or the University of California, Los Angeles, to study neuroscience and take pre-med courses. Preston, I know, that is, thank you. Preston has a strong support system behind him, with his mom, Jay, his dad, Jim, and two siblings, Rachel and Arian. Arian is a fellow Tiger at Valencia, too. I think many of them are with us in the audience tonight. Also in attendance to show their support, I saw him Principal Chris Hertzfeld, Assistant Principal Jeff Louie, and Leadership Teacher Lauren Stelfer. So great to have all of you here as well. We are delighted that Preston has agreed to serve as our student board member during his senior year at Valencia, and let's give him a round of applause. And so now we'll make it official, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Preston Bang,
I, Preston Bang,
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will faithfully discharge the duties
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
As a student board member,
As a student board member,
I am committed to
I am committed to
providing a voice for students,
Providing a voice for students.
including communicating effectively
Including communicating effectively.
regarding schools, programs,
Regarding schools, programs.
activities and student achievement.
Activities and student achievement.
Furthermore, I will do my best
Furthermore, I will do my best.
to ensure all representative opinions
To ensure all representative opinions.
of the students of the Placentia Yorbalinda Unified School District
Of the students of the Placentia Yorbalinda Unified School District.
are actively sought, heard, and considered.
Are actively sought, heard, and considered.
as I serve as a student board member
As I serve as a student board member.
to the Board of Education.
To the Board of Education.
Congratulations, sir. Yeah, please have a seat.
Awesome. That looks good on him, doesn't it? Okay, so let's let the record show, all board members, including our student board member, are present. Okay, moving on, I need the motion for the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three Board of Education agenda as recommended by the Superintendent.
I'll second.
All right, I've got a motion, and I've got a second. Stan Anderson, any comments? Awesome, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so I got five plus our student board member, thank you. Awesome, okay. Next is our public comment announcement. Public comment cards are available in the foyer, cards must be completed and turned in prior to the designated time for public comment. We provide a maximum of three minutes per person, if a translation is needed, an additional three minutes will be given. Please let us know ahead of time, and then we can assure that we're prepared. We do have a civility policy. Education Code two-twenty percent prohibits discrimination on the basis of disability, gender, gender identity, gender expression, nationality, race, or ethnicity, religion, sexual orientation, or any other characteristics that are contained in the definition of hate crimes, except for by Section four-twenty-two point five-five of the Penal Code, including immigration status. All right, so I'll need a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, the regular meaning of the Board of Education as recommended by the Superintendent.
Second.
Motion by Marilyn Anderson, second, by Carrie Buck. Any comments? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, five plus our board member.
He was not here.
Ah, that's right, no student board member vote, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Matthews, awesome. Okay, so that will bring us to our first student board official task. Mr. Preston Bang will be giving his report.
Good evening, President Youngblood, trustees, Superintendent Dr. Matthews, and Executive Cabinet Members. I'm honored to be here tonight to share recent happenings from our comprehensive high schools and alternative campuses. From Buena Vista Virtual Academy, this semester, Buena Vista's kindergarten through second grade students are going to learn to code using Sphero robots, and third grade through fifth grade students will have the opportunity to take Engineering Inventors Level Two. Middle school students are going to build, code, and drive a remote car using special software. The school staff is excited to see what their students will build. From El Camino Real High School, starting next semester, El Camino will be, will launch an innovative program called The Raptor's Edge. This includes a new best bell schedule, so students will have more opportunities to accelerate their credit earning while also having flexibility in their day to meet their individual needs. Also, several students have met the requirements to be early graduates. Each student is recognized with a small celebration at school and is invited to participate in El Camino's formal graduation at the end of the year. At Eldorado High School, for finals week, the Eldorado Golden Hawks will host a Bellies and Brains Muffin Monday. Both the student body and staff will enjoy each other's company while eating and feeding their bellies and brains together with breakfast and studying amongst one another. Moving on to Esperanza High School, winter sports are still in full swing at Esperanza High School. Girls and boys basketball and soccer, and girls and boys, or, girls and boys basketball and girls and boys soccer are both having amazing seasons. With finals quickly approaching, Esperanza's students and teachers are preparing for a successful exam season following the first semester of the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year. From George Key, from George Key School and Venture Academy, in celebrating the work and kindness of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Venture students are participating in a day of service. Classes will be filling local blessing boxes and traveling to nearby parks to help clean up areas and provide service to the community. Moving on to Parkview School, Parkview teacher Mrs. Beggin is the proud recipient of a five-thousand-dollar Reach Foundation Educator Grant Fund, which, which will be used to fund the schools strumming through STEM program, and included will be ten auto harps that will spark students' interests in areas of math and science through the medium of music. At Valencia High School, Valencia High School's esports Rocket League team finished in fourth place in the Western Region for the fall season. In total, ninety-five schools participated, and impressively, VHS made it to the semifinal match. VHS senior Steven Sagawa recently won a prestigious award from the Association for Career and Technical Education. He is one of eight recipients from a pool of four hundred thousand applicants. At Yorbalinda High School, the Mustangs are planning special events for Kindness Month on campus, including Zen Rock Painting Club, writing kind letters to teachers, and selling tote bags. That is all.
Awesome, great job. So, Mr. Bang, what experiences do you hope to gain from serving as a Placentia, Placentia Yorbalinda Unified School District Student Board Member?
Well, to start, it's an amazing opportunity, so thank you, everyone, that made this possible. And going back to your question, I think if there's one thing, it's really to broaden my perspective as a student. I think it's easy to be absorbed in this lifestyle that high school students kind of surround themselves in, and so being, serving on this board, I think, would just be a great opportunity to, like, gain new experiences and really just broaden my scope on everything.
Very good. Okay, this will bring us to our Superintendent's Report. Dr. Matthews?
Thank you, and good evening again, President Youngblood, trustees, and Executive Cabinet Members. We are proud to announce that four elementary schools, they are Brookhaven, Bryant Ranch, Lakeview, and Linda Vista, have been named as two thousand and twenty-three California Distinguished Schools, and that's the state's top award for campuses. Schools were selected by analyzing data reported through the two thousand and twenty-two dashboard, including assessment results, chronic absenteeism, suspension rates, and socioeconomic data. These elementary schools are no strangers to the title of California Distinguished School, having earned that same distinction several times in previous years. Congratulations to them. Thank you. Next, we're proud to announce that the Orange County Music and Arts Administrators recently announced the two thousand and twenty-three Art Outstanding Arts Educators and Music and Arts Award recipients. Seven P Y L U S D educators were nominated in various categories, and Mr. Jeff Evans was selected for the distinguished honor of the most outstanding instrumental music teacher in Orange County. Congratulations to Mr. Evans. All of these educators will be honored at the O C Arts Educator Awards Gala on February eighth at the Segregative Center for the Arts. It's no secret that our school district has a longstanding tradition of excellence in performing arts, and so much of this excellence can be attributed to our outstanding teachers and support staff. Our four comprehensive high schools are now accepting student applications for their career technical education programs and other academies. I must say that as a newcomer to P Y L U S D, I am overwhelmingly impressed by all the C T E programs that we have and the amazing academies that we have as well. I haven't memorized them, so I'll read them to you. That's our E D Law and Digital Media Arts Academies at Eldorado, the Air Force J R O T C, the Engineering and Manufacturing, and Medical Science at Esperanza, Cambridge A I C E, International Baccalaureate and Val Tech Programs at Valencia, and Mustang Business Academy at Yorbalinda, one of which is learning how to cook, which is a pretty cool program over there. More information about their academy and the program applications are available on our website. Next, you are aware that we announced to the board that we received one hundred and sixty-eight doses of Narcan through the California Department of Health Services, naloxone distribution product. We quickly distributed this Narcan to our thirty-four school sites back in December, and we've already trained over a hundred and fifty staff members how to distribute that, how to recognize a potential opioid overdose, overdose, and administer it. I want to thank our lead nurse, Michelle De Haven, and our school nurse, Amy Kleiner, for their leadership, and I want to thank the board because you are very supportive of this action. We are grateful to the Department of Health Care Services for providing us with a life-saving drug at no cost, it makes our campuses a safer place for all. At our last meeting, thank you, a question was raised regarding our processes for accepting donated books into our school libraries. I agree that the best way to handle this is to follow our established processes. Since our last meeting, we have reviewed these processes with all of our principals at all levels, and our, at our March Board meeting, I'll come back to the board with an update on where we are with that process. The L cap has processes, we're becoming to be in full swing there. On February second, we're hosting a virtual community forum to solicit input on our, on our L cap. Staff will share outcomes and action plans for the upcoming year. The event will also provide our various educational partners with an opportunity to provide their insights and ideas regarding our continuous improvement efforts. You can register now at W W W dot P Y L U S D dot org. At our last meeting, we heard from speakers regarding the issue of sexual assault. I want to say that it's important to, for everyone to know that all allegations of assault, including situations like the one shared in public comment, are never minimized and never dismissed. They are all taken very seriously, they are all investigated immediately, and we take appropriate action based on that investigation. And finally, in recent months, we've been, been made aware of instances of racism and discrimination on our campuses, mostly in the form of graffiti and student dialogue. And as we reflect on the celebration of life and work of Dr. Martin Luther King from yesterday, I know that we cannot be silent when these incidents occur. When they happen, I think you know that our principals and our, share with our communities that we are deeply disappointed to, to learn that, I'm sorry, that we, to learn such incidents, and we always condemn the incidents and say that it will not be tolerated on our campuses. For some of you, I know, those words are not enough. I understand that, but to be silent and not say those words, that's wrong as well. We are all against racism. Our board has spoken out against racism. As you, as you well know, the board has put two different resolutions out, Resolution twenty-oh-four, back in the twenty-twenty, and Resolution twenty-one-twelve, and that's a resolution banning C R T, but in that resolution, the board condemns racism, racist conduct, bigotry, or anything that constitutes hate crimes. We recognize that it's reprehensible that racism and discrimination persist within our community and across the nation. As such, we are looking at what we can do to research and study different options to help minimize these sentiments on our campuses. We were looking at area, focus area four-point-oh of the P Y L U S D Advantage, which states that we foster a culture that promotes the health, safety, and well-being of all of our students. I'll bring more information on this topic, including our current efforts and potential additional efforts to our February board meeting, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Matthews, that was very informative. Okay, that brings us to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for the public to provide input to the Board of Education. During public comment period, board members do not dialogue with speakers or make comments regarding the information shared. We have nine people wishing to speak tonight, so each speaker will have three minutes. When's the last time we ever heard a three-minute speaking, huh? All right, excellent. As, let's see, I'm going to ask the speakers to repeat their names when they come up, and I will also call up the first four speakers to sit in the front row and be ready for their comment. Here we go, so the first ones, I've got Ms. Gabriella Rollins, Mark Myers, Pam, and Paula Powers. So Ms. Ms. Rollins, if you want to go ahead and, sorry about that.
Good evening, board and staff, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm Gabriella Rollins. I'm the Director of the Yorbalinda Arts Alliance Foundation, and I'm also the parent advocate with Arts Now. With me is Neil Kaplan, who is President of our Arts Foundation. Today, we attended a meeting with Arts Now and Scott Fitzpatrick from the Department of Education to discuss an overview of, of the L cap, and the, our district was recognized for emphasizing the importance of the arts for our students, and we're just so proud, and I was excited to hear all the, the awards and achievements that our district has, and thank you so much for supporting the arts, it's really important to us. Our Arts Foundation has been advocating for the arts for over twenty-three years in, in our community, and our mission is to promote, educate, and create through programs and events. We encompass all aspects of the arts, and we're so excited to be here tonight. The reason we're here is that we're launching a program that's geared toward district high school art students. We're calling it the Student Arts Ambassador Program. This is a mentorship and leadership program. It offers opportunities for students to apply what they're learning in school and take it out to the community, and this includes the visual arts, theater, dance, music, and all, any aspect of the arts, and the students that are really enthused and want to be proactive, this is going to be a great opportunity for them. Our Adult Advisory Board will offer workshops and seminars and encourage the students to take part in planning arts events, so they will learn how to use some, some of the skills that they're learning in school, we're applying it out in the community. The city of Yorbalinda is very, very supportive. Our Parks and Recreation Department is partnering with our foundation, and the first exciting event is going to be called Artsology, and it's scheduled for Sunday, April the thirtieth. We're taking over the entire Yorbalinda Cultural Arts Center, it's a brand-new facility, and we're reserving the entire facility for the students to showcase arts, entertainment, and exhibits. This event will be free and open to the community and to come and appreciate all the talented students in our district, and we're going to be upgrading you, updating you as we progress and let you know what's going on in that program. We'll be talking to various, the teachers, the P T As, the parents, to get more and more people involved, and like we said, we want to include as many students as possible in this program, and we look forward to your support. Thank you. Oh, one more thing, in case you haven't heard, on February the seventh, Dr. Maria Rosario Jackson, oop, is going to be doing the Creative Edge Lecture at Barclay, the Barclay Theater, so contact us if you'd like to attend, we'll tell you how to get there.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you. Next up, Mark Myers.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Mark Myers, I teach choir at Esperanza. I came here last year from a long career in education in the Chicago area, teaching in a district similar to this, and also in the city of Chicago, where I worked with a community organization that reached out to over four thousand kids in third through twelfth grade in the city of Chicago through music instruction. First of all, I want to say I'm so grateful for the work that's happening with our theater at Esperanza, with updating and renovating that space, so thanks to many people here for supporting that project. Secondly, my main point for being here is just expressing my excitement about Proposition twenty-eight and the funding that that will provide for music and arts instruction, although we are really proud of what we do here, and a lot of teachers have worked really hard with our students in music. We do start our music curriculum in fourth grade, and at this point, half of the districts in Orange County actually start in kindergarten or TK. And then also, just within our programs, at the elementary level, I think many of you are probably familiar, we give two hours of instruction to instrumental music, but in vocal general, we only do one hour of instruction. As a result, we do not have elementary school choirs in our schools, which is something I had never really heard of until I came here. So I know there have been a number of challenges to that, and I'm hoping that Proposition twenty-eight can open the road to more staffing, which that is exactly what that proposition is geared toward eighty percent. I believe the funding is to be dedicated to staffing, so we're excited about that. I'm really grateful to Gina Aguilar and Connor Drake for reaching out to our staff to ask us for our input as teachers in what the plans are moving forward. I also hope that staffing in terms of putting highly qualified teachers in all of our classrooms that are fully qualified to teach, whether it's music in the vocal specialty or instrumental specialty, is something that we can look at addressing. And again, I look forward to working with, with everyone on taking something that I think we're really proud of as a community and offering more opportunities to kids at, at an earlier age that will benefit them in life in many ways. There have been lots of concerns in the community, especially after the pandemic and the isolation that kids went through of their mental health, their social emotional learning, and also, we just heard about acceptance of others despite their differences culturally in many different ways, and I got to say that music education really authentically addresses all those issues in a way that's meaningful for kids, whether they go into music as a career or not, that really enriches their lives. So thanks for the opportunity to speak, and it's a, it's an honor to be in this district, and I'm looking forward to the growth that we see.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Pam.
This was not what I was planning on speaking about, but thank you, Gabriella, for allowing me to sing Handel's Messiah last December. me to sing Handel's Messiah last December. I am a product of East Coast schools, where I did participate in the choir in elementary school and middle school, so I'm all for that. The two things I wanted to talk about tonight is making this district more focused on the student and what's best for the student and prioritizing student needs. I attended my first Yorba Linda High School Track and Field Parent Meeting last week and heard about needing money to pay for repairs and buy new equipment, and I thought, here we go again, same as what I experienced with the aquatics program at Yorba Linda High School. I met with the prior superintendent, and he later issued a memo to staff to complete a list of repairs. It was a whole page long. I'm requesting the same here. I don't have the list of equipment needed, but I do know the new coach, the new track coach, is seeking that the track be resurfaced and restriped. Apparently, no repairs have been made since the school opened. He's been working very hard to bring the CIF preliminaries to Yorba Linda High School for the first time. That'll bring a lot of publicity and money to the Track and Field Program for the first time. David Giordano told me there are capital funds available from the bond refinancing proceeds, and I'm requesting money be set aside to resurface and restripe the track in the next month. The second issue is teachers not handing back tests and quizzes. It's final season. I met with a teacher at Yorba Linda High School last week about some kind of policy or practice our district has. She said the policy is supported by the district and the administration, and I said, but it's not supported by the students and the parents. I don't blame this teacher for upholding this policy. She's only doing her job and as instructed. My kid actually loves her as a teacher, but I blame the people sitting up here on the dais. Can we please get back to policies and practices that does what's best for the student, that creates an environment for them to succeed? I will bet every single adult here was able to take their tests and quizzes home to help them prepare for the next test and particularly the final exam. I'd like to offer a solution. If the concern is cheating and time required for teachers to create a new test, how about a standard example geometry test be created across all high schools so the burden doesn't fall on one individual teacher? A new test could be created every year. If a particular class is a little behind or ahead, the teacher can simply tell students, don't answer those particular questions. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Next up, Ms. Powers.
Good evening, Paula Powers. As we rank on all the accomplishments that we have made and what we hope to achieve in the year to come, it's time to look at our practices and see which ones are working and if any need to be implemented to improve our way of doing things. One improvement I would like to propose would be to have transparency about what our board members are working on between meetings to improve our children's educational experience. What trainings do you attend to support your understanding of issues facing students? Who have you sought out to discuss student concerns about isolationism and intolerance that have been injected into our community? What programs are you learning about that serve our students and prepare them for a hopeful future? Relying on board member reports alone is not helpful to get a clear picture of what is being worked on. For example, school visit reports had once been the staple of each trustee's board statement, was a great way for members to learn about what was going on at different schools, but some trustee reports never mention school visits. How do trustees see their policies in action? Speak with students on campus and understand needs at the ground level without ever going into a classroom? How can trustees make decisions that affect all students when they never visit with the west end of our district? Shining a light on what board members do with their time would ease concern from the community to justify money spent on stipends paid with little accountability. My hope for the new year is to get back to focusing on our students, stay out of the news, and make board meetings uneventful again.
Next up, Ms. Julie Klinkenberg, Chari Palaki, Brian Sarno, and Raquel F. Julie, you'll be up first.
I believe we have more in common than our differences, and I was talking to a friend recently and was reminded of this simple visual to help us explain the structure. I'm stealing this from, I'm borrowing this from Simon Sinek. If you don't know who Simon is, he is an author and a speaker and a leadership expert. And this might be a stretch, so my apologies to Simon, but if we focus on the why and work outward, I think we can unify and like the previous speaker said, like, get rid of the noise that's distracting the, why most of us are here, because we care about kids. We care. Successful innovative groups, including school districts, they start with the why and will work outside, inside-out, which is counterintuitive. Most groups, and those who might not be as successful, start with the what, and then the how, and then the why. So here, stick with me. Right now, our what is our school board of trustees. Our how is our cabinet. I call you cabinet. I don't know what you call yourselves. The cabinet? The professionals at our sites, like the trained, qualified, highly qualified educators at the sites. That's the how. And then the why is public education. We're here because our children deserve a high-quality education. As Simon says, people don't buy what you do, they buy why you do it. So as I was reflecting on why, our why in placenta Yorba Linda, I'm the proud mom of three graduates, and I think we have the same why now as we did when my children were here, but I feel like we've been wasting so much time on the minutia and the what down here that we're losing sight of the why. And I'm so happy we have four California distinguished schools. My kids, when my kids were at Fairmont and Yorba Linda, they were called out for excellence, so I know we can do it again. According to a HART Research Education Survey, which was published January 13 of this year, voters' top goals for schools are strong foundational skills in reading, math, and science. And to you older folks like me, it's not how we learned. We need to be current with our practices because our students, like, our students who are in class right now are different. They're growing up in a different time. They need to have critical thinking, collaboration, communication, creativity. These are the key, and they are what our current educated staff and all across the district, they're currently trained in that, and they are equipped to do so. So I say, let the teachers teach. Also, the survey included a goal to ensure all students, regardless of background, have the opportunity to succeed. I love that motto, notice, needed, and nurtured, that I see on banners across our district. Our why should promote diversity and recognize what a beautiful, messy, colorful world we live in. We want all students to be prepared for college, careers, service, and citizenship in a world that is made up of humans from all walks of life.
I'm appreciative that Dr. Matthews brought that up. AB 1266 was signed into law by Jerry Brown in 2013. This requires all K through 12 public schools to allow boys in girls' restrooms, showers, and locker rooms. Over the past six years, hundreds of PYL families have been speaking and emailing the board and the district about their concerns. There have been exposures. Girls are holding their urine, they're staying home when they are menstruating, and they feel unsafe. That is because it is unsafe. Last week, a minor walked into a girls' locker room at her YMCA and was exposed to a naked man. Our high schools have minors as well as adult high schoolers. Can you imagine being a 14-year-old girl and changing your clothes next to an 18-year-old male? Can you imagine being any-age girl and changing your clothes in front of an any-age boy? I'm aware that the LCAP planning is underway, and I'm asking that the board look into removing the multi-cell bathrooms and locker rooms and installing single-use facilities. You owe it to the children of PYL USD to ensure that they feel safe and that they have bodily privacy. Thank you.
Brian Sarno. So I was up here to talk about Board Bylaw 3280, which deals with gifts, grants, and bequests. So this will sort of go in line with what Dr. Matthews was speaking on earlier, potentially. So the Board Bylaw states, if an organization or individual wishes to donate such a gift, and it provides examples of gifts within the bylaw, to a school, it should make known its intentions in writing to the Board of Education. Having first consulted with the school principal and superintendent, board approval should be obtained prior to purchase. It goes on later to state, if an organization or individual wishes to donate money or equipment to support an extracurricular or co-curricular activity, it shall make known its intentions in writing to the Board of Education. Having first consulted with the principal and superintendent, board approval shall be obtained prior. Should is a recommendation. Shall is a requirement. I take this to mean that at a minimum, prior to any donations being made, the principal of the school and the superintendent must approve the donation. However, donations for extracurricular and co-curricular activities are required to obtain board approval prior to acceptance. Having gone through previous board meeting minutes, it does not appear that board approval has been provided for the majority of potential donations to these programs. I ask that the board enforce this bylaw in its entirety as required. So this goes back to, potentially, to the Track and Field, to anything sports-related, theater-related. It's in the bylaw. If the bylaw needs to be revised, then I suggest that the board makes that revision. But previously, I believe all of those should be provided to us to know what has been, because there could be conflicts of interest potentially that we are not aware of. In addition, the bylaw states that the superintendent shall establish criteria to be met in acceptance of gifts and the procedures for examining and evaluating offers of gifts to the district. This probably goes back to what you were saying previously, Dr. Matthews, about talking to the principals. I could not find anything in the bylaws. It would be nice for us to know. Maybe when you've made that decision, it could be with library books, it could be with other things, but I feel like we should also be brought in the know on that. Further on, I couldn't find anything in the bylaws that regards an approved list of books which are available to students to check out in the library. There is no discussion of the library in the bylaws at all, whether it has to be approved books or not. So these are just items for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Raquel, and I'm a parent of three in the district as well as an educator. There are a few things I want to address tonight. The first is the approval agreement with Orbach Huff and Henderson, LLP attorneys-at-law. The agenda is unclear as to why we need to spend up to $150,000 to retain a new law firm when we already have an attorney for the district. So I'm asking that you please shed some light on this for the public before voting on it later tonight. Next, the agenda asks you, the board, to approve many items related to student services, training for teachers, and contracts recommended by school PTAs. As a parent, I always appreciate when trustees ask insightful questions and research those organizations on their own. However, as it was pointed out before, Carrie Buck seems to be one of the only trustees who visits schools regularly, and since other trustees haven't, I feel that there's no reason to doubt that the school admins, the district, and PTAs ask for these services for a good reason, because they need them. Therefore, if anyone plans to vote against any of these services, an acceptable alternative should be suggested in order to mitigate any negative impact on students. I also agree with what was said before. I do feel that sometimes board reports aren't specific enough as to what is being done behind the scenes, and I ask for more transparency with that as well. If you're going to schools, if you're working on things like, we as parents, we're here because we care, we want to know about it. So perhaps adding those in your board reports would be really helpful for us. And then the last thing I wanted to speak about, and I really thank Dr. Matthews for you bringing this up, is the instances of racism and anti-LGBTQ sentiment among students. I appreciate that you've said it publicly, that you're working on addressing it. I also appreciate that the board, or at least our last board, condemned racism officially via a resolution. I feel that that is step one of a long list of steps that need to occur in order to address what's happening in our schools. And when considering this issue, I think there are a few things that need to be kept in mind. I think, first of all, students don't always understand what it is that they're saying. I know that. They're kids. They're being kids. They're saying things that they don't understand the gravity of. I don't think, most of the parents aren't here to punish students. I understand you condemn racism. That doesn't necessarily mean that we want to punish them, but we want to educate them. And we want to make sure the CRT ban doesn't keep them from getting educated. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our last speaker will be Ms. Shannie Murray.
Thank you. I'm just here to say I'm still concerned about the Cal State Fullerton pulling its student teachers. My kids have had some of the most amazing teachers here in PYL, so I hate to see future teachers, some former PYL students themselves, missing out on learning from the best of the best. I also don't know why we'd want to deprive our students and teachers of this local resource. I've been questioning the need for the CRT ban for more than a year. I met with Leandra Blades last spring, and she couldn't provide any evidence of a problem in our district. I asked Dr. Matthews how many district complaints have been received regarding CRT or CSUF student teachers, and he said zero. So I'm kindly asking the board to revise or repeal the ban because pedagogical approaches rooted in tenants of critical race theory pose no threat to our students. In fact, they could help address actual problems in PYL, such as the racist incident at Travis Ranch, so students can better focus on learning. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, folks. Okay. This will bring us to our general functions. Our item number one was moved, so we'll go past that. Move on to item number two. I'll ask for a motion on item. Oh, I'm sorry. Let me back up. At this point, we'll go ahead and do our board reports. Board reports, we'll go ahead and start with Ms. Buck.
Sure. Thank you. Well, I have a few things to update you on. I'll start with school visits or activities that are around the district. I had the opportunity to go to the El Dorado Jazz Breakfast, which a couple of you went to as well. It's always a great event to go to, and it's early in the morning, and it's an awesome way to start the day, I have to say. I look forward to it every year. So thank you for the invitation. I hope you all can go another time if you missed it. I attended the district holiday breakfast here at the, or no, at the PDA, listened to Esperanza's choir that sang for us there. That was a lovely morning, or a lovely lunch to get to spend with our district staff, our district office staff, and hear about things that are going on. And what I did hear about was all of the door decorations. It was such a big topic that I came and checked them all out. So the doors here at the district or in each department were decorated in a different way, and I have to say that special ed really, like, knocked it out of the park and laid down the gauntlet for next year. Theirs was a whole experience, a Polar Express experience, so it was nice to come and see that. I attended, or I went to a school visit at Bryant Ranch right before the holiday and got to see some great stuff happening. And to cap it all off was the kindergarten or the TK class that were getting ready for their performance that night, and they had the fifth graders there watching as their practice audience. It was absolutely adorable. And we got through every classroom with Mrs. Robles at Bryant Ranch. And then I also attended Woodsboro that same week, right before the end of school, and that was fun as well. You'd think that it would be not the best visit if you're going the last day of school because you're... because you're not going to see a ton of instruction. But I did see actually a lot of, of great things happening. It was just tied to various activities. Um, so for PE, they were doing, um, holiday-related things out in the yard. And, um, and the whole event was capped off by a, a PTA pancake breakfast, which was really nice. Um, and then since we've been back, I went over and visited Wagner Elementary uh, this last week, last week, um, and got to tour all of their classes. I went into a couple of the classrooms that I used to work in. Um, so that was kind of fun. And got to see the upgrades that are happening at, um, the old Wagner preschool site. For CSBA, I attended a webinar on the governor's budget. Uh, OCSBA will be having a fiscal seminar tomorrow as well, um, followed by the, um, our Board of Directors meeting. But we'll get a breakdown of all of things happening. Um, it's also, you can zoom into it. So I would encourage you to do that. There's a lot of stuff happening, um, for the governor's budget. Um, and for ROP, I attended my first ROP meeting last week, which was, um, very exciting. Uh, we got to, um, it's, we're in our, uh, WASC review, uh, again, with the, um, sort of like the small, uh, review to prep for, um, the bigger one later. But, um, where there's a six-year, um, window, and they've always had their, um, the six-year WASC visit, um, dead, or timeline. So they're just in the middle of, um, of just getting an update. So it was nice to see all the stuff that's happening and the different CTE programs around North Orange County. Um, we did approve a purchase of twenty IMAX and forty computers, including software and all the other, um, items for the digital media arts programs at Valencia High School in El Dorado. So that's exciting. Um, that'll be coming. Um, and, um, just two things I want to touch on. Um, at, while I was at Bryant Ranch, I saw the nutrition services area there. Um, it's a, the pilot that they're doing with the new, um, service program, um, so that the kids can come through and they're actually getting food served to them versus in the plastic containers, which is such a better, appealing, nicer way to look at food and, and get kids to eat. So that was fun to see. I hope that we, um, take advantage of all the grants that we have out there for facilities and, and kitchen to expand that. Um, I think that's important to get as many of those out as we can to elementary schools, um, instead of just the shipped in or the, the trucked in products if we could. Um, and then just going back to the preschool program, um, the upgrades are looking great over at Wagner, but I'm interested in what's happening with our preschool program, the paid-for preschool program. I was expecting it to appear in there at that location. And I, um, we have a lot of families that have kids on their waiting list. Um, it is a paid program, but there is a, a huge shortage for preschools. And so if we could expand what we're doing, have preschool, more preschools, we're going to keep those kids, um, instead of transferring out to other, um, to other schools. Um, if we start them early, they tend to stay, um, in our school and not transfer out. So I encourage us to look at what we can do to help, um, preschool and, and look at that in the future. I think we had the congratulations I was gonna also say. So congratulations to our schools for our, um, our, our four schools that received that distinguished school. Um, and then there was also a student that received an award. And I left my notes at home, so I don't have his name written down. But, um, uh, if you go on social media, you'll see it there. It was, uh, one of our students at Yorblenda High School that was named one of the three hundred, um, three hundred math, uh, math and science represented, or, uh, recognized for some sort, sort of, I'm so sorry that I forget, um, and didn't bring my notes. But it was quite an amazing recognition, uh, one student at, i- in our district, all over the country, um, looking at the, the science and, and, and math. I will send it because it was really important. Um, and so I apologized to him out there. I wish I could remember his, his name because it was called Tyler Yang. Thank you so much. Um, so great achievement for him. Thank you for, for the assist out there. Um, it's, uh, just, I was just amazed at what he did. And he had a project that was probably seven or eight words long about what he did and what he looked at, um, as a result of that, um, what he had to submit. And it was quite impressive. So, um, I'll make sure that we all get that information we hear about Tyler. So that's it for me.
Good evening, everybody, and happy New Year to everybody. I hope you guys had an enjoyable winter break. I know I sure did. And I'd like to welcome, um, Preston to officially to our school board. And we are very excited to learn more from you. And, and, um, please let us know if we can help you in any way. Um, for school visits, I went to Woodsboro Elementary. And my favorite part of going to Woodsboro was getting to see the twig science in action. Um, they were doing science experiments on trying to figure out what kind of beak works best for catching, um, different type of food. So, um, it was really fun and, um, getting in there with the kids, trying to, you know, suck, um, they had like a sponge with little rice in it. And so we were trying to get that out and trying all the different tools to see which kind of beak would work best, um, for those students. And, and, um, you know, thinking it through, problem-solving with the kids and using, um, critical thinking skills to figure out which tools work best. I loved, um, I went into one class where they were working on novels, and they were using kind of a higher level of questioning, you know, trying to predict what was gonna happen and writing their predictions. And I, I just think, again, really good use of critical thinking. Um, someone mentioned to me not too long ago that they said their student had never annotated a book. And I thought that was odd because every cl- school I've visited, um, I've always seen annotating, annot- annotating, sorry. We're not shopping. And, um, and again, at the school, I saw lots of great examples of annotating happening and using supporting materials for the students. A fun fact I learned in PE, I was watching this game being played. I'm like, this really reminds me of the video games in the eighties. This looks like Pac-Man. And sure enough, that's what they were playing. They were playing Pac-Man, um, for PE using, um, pool buoys. And it was really fun to watch Pac-Man and just see the creativity of our PE teachers in action. Um, at that school, they have a, like in every school, they have a behavior specialist. And they have a student's door there, um, where the kids can get tickets for being helpful and kind. And I'm always loving the, all the different creativity, creative ways that our schools do to help promote being kind and, and to reward that kindness. And then the kids can purchase things for themselves. And it was also, I think, um, lunch with the principal. They could save up enough points and, and go, which is the biggest thing. And of course, I just love, um, all the different holiday traditions at the schools. They have what they call a winter fest. And so I learned more about that, where the whole school does it. Instead of having classroom, um, parties, they all gather. Um, they have a very, um, competitive twelve days of desserts with a Rubik's. And they're judged, and it's serious over there. And, um, also, they had a dep- a really fun, um, Finding Buddy the Elf. And he was everywhere. And it was just kind of, uh, just fun way to enjoy the holidays and, um, you know, make those last, especially since we went to school to the bitter end, to make that enjoyable for everybody. And it was just a great visit, and I really enjoyed my time there. Also, um, I stopped by, um, the Apple, um, Union Office. Um, they were having what they called their Candy Land event. And this is where they, they help organize gifts for our students and their families. And, um, it was just really fun to come watch families in need come and get gifts. And I learned so much about their program. And I was really humbled by a lot of their gifts. You know, they were asking for, um, detergent to wash their clothes. Very simple things. And then to see that the whole, that whole school's participated, not just teachers, night custodians, clerks, you name it. Um, these schools, all the school sites really came together to purchase these gifts and to support these students. And, um, I just always appreciate all the effort that goes in to making sure that everyone is thought of. And, um, I enjoyed my time there. Um, also, I wanted to say congratulations to our California Distinguished Schools as well. And lastly, I got to go to Valencia today and, uh, watch, um, a little bit of girls' basketball and also, uh, girls' water polo and support our female athletes. And it was, it's always fun and, um, exciting to see, um, everyone, you know. I watched the freshman game, so watching, you know, people learn a new sport is always unique. Um, when my kids were in water polo, I, I used to say, "Don't drown the freshmen, please." But watching them really, I watched some games earlier and seeing the progression is really great. And so I'm grateful to our coaches and our administrators for supporting those kinds of sports. And that's all I've got.
All right. Um, well, I actually got the opportunity to go see the Yorblenda High School production of Clue. I don't know if anybody got to go see it. Uh, but it was, I loved that movie and might play that game with my kids all the time. And it was actually really phenomenal. We had a good time, took the kids. Uh, and just seeing the theater be a place where kids can actually use their gifts in our district is great. Uh, in line with seeing kids' gifts, I also went to the Jazz Breakfast at El Dorado, which El Dorado, ever since I was, uh, in the band in junior high myself, El Dorado was always the band that you aspired to be in. Like, I was a drummer. And so watching, even watching the jazz drummers at the breakfast, it was like, yeah, they're still good. This is, this is really exciting. Um, so that was, that was a great opportunity to see the kids in their element and the parent helpers. I mean, I don't know if you guys are involved in any of the things, uh, at your schools, but when the parents are involved, which the band parents are at El Dorado, they just do such a great job and go over the top to accommodate anybody that's in attendance. Uh, and it was, I had a few conversations with parents. And they just, they love the program and they love their kids and they love seeing them succeed. Uh, and just, I love that this district really supports students in what it is that they do well. And that's just something that's so great. And then, uh, along with that, in the break, I went to the, uh, Esperanza Women's Basketball Tournament down in Elsinore. It was a long drive every day, but we came back victorious. We were champions. Uh, that's the second actual championship that the girls have won. Yeah, give them a round of applause, absolutely. Uh, so they're having a great season. It's been, uh, a wonderful opportunity to see that. And then beyond that, I've been speaking with a few teachers and parents in the district specifically about some curriculum items and trying to get as much feedback as possible as to what is good and what needs to be changed in the classroom. Because I think that's, it's been said in public comment many times, and we talk about it. Uh, the classroom and the students are the why of the district. And I want to make sure that everything that we do goes back to the students and supporting them in what it is that they need to succeed in the classroom and then after they leave, uh, our district. So I'm just, uh, excited to see more of that and, uh, learn as much as possible to know how we as a board can help support the students and the teachers, um, and the administration as we go forward. So that's it.
Hello, everyone. Um, so I also was able to go and see Clue at the Yorblenda High School Theater. And it was great. And my favorite part was when they all got into the big group and they ran at the front. I was just, I was dying. Um, I was lucky to sit in the back because I was just laughing so hard. It was such a good play. They did such a good job, took the whole family. Everybody loved it. Um, also, I wanted to give a shout out to Travis Ranch, um, for the Matilda play that they put on last week at the pack. Amazing, amazing job. Um, I was able to go see the Esperanza Orchestra performance. It was, I believe, a Wednesday or Thursday night, and their music was fabulous. Um, I was so impressed by, um, our musicians and everything that they've been doing. It was just, um, a really great performance. And the, the music that they were playing, you know, I, I listened to a lot of classical music sometimes in the car, and they were just, they were killing it. They were doing like really popular songs. I had one of my kids with me, and he even said, "Mom, they totally killed it tonight." So really, really, uh, huge props to them. I also went to the El Dorado Jazz, um, Concert Breakfast. Um, and whoever made the chili reno, uh, egg bake, that was amazing, um, along with the amazing food. So please, please invite me back next year. Um, we, okay, so I've also been to several wrestling tournaments where I've been able to see all four of our high schools compete. Um, I've been to some basketball games, both men and women. Um, and so it's just been a very busy month. I was also able today to tour the Esperanza Theater. As you guys know, it's under construction. Um, and what I really would like to see with this, um, is I would like to see us as a board to support a rushed finish date for this. And because when I go to, when you go to all these places, right? You see Valencia's performing, El Dorado's performing, and Yorblenda's performing. And a lot of them have their own theaters. And I mean, Yorblenda, boom, they're killing it. They're bringing out all kinds of plays, you know, almost monthly. And so Esperanza has not had a theater, um, or a working theater, I should say, in a few years. And so I know that the boosters have really been working hard, um, to get this theater going. And so the reason I'm asking if we can possibly expedite, um, the theater is because I think it would be very meaningful for our seniors to have a theater that they can perform in on their way out. And I think it would be a great for the booster parents too, who have been working so hard and be- doing all of these, um, supports. Um, and just really to try to give back to that. So if we can do anything possible to get this done by this summer, um, I think we should do so because I think we owe it to our families and our students. I am looking forward. I'm looking forward to attending the snow day at Travis Ranch next week with this weather we're having. I don't think we have to worry about snow melting, but maybe we'll actually feel like maybe we're back east. Um, and so that is fabulous. I don't know if any other school in our district has had a snow day. And so it's gonna be very excited, um, exciting to see. And I'm sure the kids, um, are just gonna have a blast. I also, um, have toured the Esperanza Manufacturing Program because I heard that we are actually having to turn students away from the program because it is so popular and it is highly, highly successful. So I went in and asked, "What can we do to help you grow your program so we can accept more students?" And so one thing that was mentioned is possibly having another teacher on staff with him. So the classes, because it's only him right now teaching. And so he has, you know, the beginning, he has the middle, he has, he has all these different levels. But he can't do it on his own. So if he had an additional teacher, he could have some help. And so we wouldn't be churning away students, but we could actually be accepting more. And so, you know, there were some other things, you know, he wants a couple of stories. He wants to take over West Campus. And I said, "Maybe, maybe, maybe we could do a teacher." So, you know, we're starting small with that. But, um, I just know that if we're churning students away, this is such a, I mean, that, that's a big deal. And their, um, their facility is absolutely amazing. And I just, I think that we, um, should do whatever we can because that's bringing kids into our district. So, um, I also too was talking to, I talked to a labor negotiator. Uh, we talked about how, um, union negotiations are. And, you know, we have been, I was throwing around, um, possibly, um, make, bring it forward to the board. Do we have a labor negotiator assist with our bargaining, uh, with the union everywhere for our teachers and our staff? Um, and that was some interesting conversations. And, um, a lot of different perspectives go in as you try to understand all the bargaining that goes on because we're always seem like we're sunshining. We're always bargaining with something. So I think it would be helpful possibly to bring someone to negotiate and assist, or maybe not at all. But I left the conversation a little bit more knowledgeable about what goes on in the bargaining units. Um, I talked to some parents about iReady. They were concerned that their students are required to complete forty-five minutes of math and forty-five minutes of reading each week, or they are going to be losing their recess. And so my question was, is, um, we keep saying that this is an assessment tool. And so I'm just wondering, um, if we're asking students to log into iReady at home to complete this work, is this actually still being used as an assessment tool? Um, I also was, uh, looking at our, uh, at our scores for English learners. And I think everyone's seen it, and I don't think it's anything that we should be proud of. And I've been talking to some teachers who are teachers for English learners. And I was picking their brain and, um, looking at the different schools and asking the teachers what everybody's doing differently. And I know that, um, we do not have a director of English learners at this time, but it's one thing that I have suggested to staff. I haven't mentioned it, you know, to anybody here. But like I said, coming out of meetings and people want to know what we're talking about. about, this is something that I brought up, perhaps we should have a Director of English Learners and then maybe we can put other things, you know, under their purview as well, but this seems to be an area that we need to improve greatly in. And I think that when we talk about, you know, we're here for all students, we are here for all students and we need to be doing things well and so that's just something I've been kicking around. We all know that too, when we have people in our community whose English is a secondary language, under a direct, a Director of English Learners could also possibly bring the community together because sometimes when you have, when you don't speak the same language as the people in your community, sometimes you feel a little ostracized, you don't feel like you belong and so possibly if we have a director position here, maybe we could also bring the people in the community in and they will feel more connected and so they'll feel more connected at their home schools or feel more connected in their community and we could really bring the parents and the students in and help them out. And I think that that is one thing, we can speak all we want about these different months and we can, but if we're not acting and if we're not actually doing the work, then what are we actually doing here? And so that was one of my thoughts and carrying on. I talked to some, I talked to many parents and I believe that it should be in our boards in the future that we need to look at our discipline policy throughout the district, we need to make sure that we are having a policy that is equitable to all, we need to make sure that there are children's due process rights are not being violated, we need to make sure that it's equitable all throughout the district by teachers and by our administrative staff in giving discipline. And what we're finding is, is sometimes at some schools, we have, you know, somebody maybe issuing, you know, detention for this, but then they're getting this over here and we keep talking about equity and consistency and so I think we need to practice again what we preach. And so I do think the board needs to take a look at the discipline policy and we need to sit here and ensure that all children across this district are being treated fair and appropriately. I talked to some parents, hey, you guys wanted it, here it all is, I wasn't even going to do half of it, but let's just go. I talked to some parents who have kids in the Equestrian Program and so they were asking if we could possibly have the students in our districts who participated in Equestrian, they were wondering if they, if there is a way that they can represent their respective high schools during competitions. And so I know that, you know, we're possibly going to have beach volleyball at some of our high schools, we have some hockey teams, I think, at Yorblen High School who they recognized and it's, you know, kind of through, so they now said, "We would love if we could represent our high school when we go and we do Equestrian." So that was a question I said I would ask and so I'm asking it. And I think that's awesome because we do have some great Equestrian riders, we have some, we have some students who do rodeo, I mean, and obviously we have, in the middle of Yorblen is a lot of Equestrian, so I'm sure that that wasn't just asked by the two or three families who approached me about it. I talked to some kindergarten teachers and about reading benchmarks and about some of our reading issues that we're having, our scores being low in, you know, reading and math. And so someone suggested that sometimes in kindergarten, it's, we believe sometimes that the kids come out reading, but that benchmarks are actually very low. So they asked, "Should we try to have higher reading benchmarks in kindergarten instead of possibly sight words, should we be raising that bar?" I thought that was interested, interesting and I knew Linda Adamson would be the person to ask about that. I talked to, when I saw some of the state testing and I saw some of the schools that were scoring higher and I went and asked that school, made an appointment, went in and talked to them and I asked what math that they used on their state testing to get an eighty-seven percent score in math. They told me that they're using Singapore math and also another recommendation was a Joe Bowler math program and she's out of Stanford and so it seems that those programs are very popular and so those are the things that they've also been using. Some have been using Singapore math in conjunction with Common Core and so that's helping not only appreciate, you know, you have both sides, you have the Common Core and then you have some traditional, what else? And then so in regard to the LCAP, that's coming up and so, so some of the funding that I brought up in some of the meetings was some of the things I was asking for was lights at Eldorado Football Field, air conditioning in the Eldorado Gym. I've asked for grading guidelines, as I've spoken before in the past meetings, I said I want equitable grading guidelines across the district. So I've been in conversations about how to do that and possibly putting that in the LCAP and I'm just telling you guys things that I've been in meetings for, I don't know if it will go in the LCAP, I don't know if the board will approve it, but these are the things that I have been asking for because parents have been asking for this as well. I've talked again about the removal of iReady and in place of that, Common Assessments in every grade level across the Core Five, which is English, Math, History, Science, and World Languages. I've asked for pacing guides for all levels, I've asked for more funding for our Sports, Arts, and our Theater Programs, which is nothing new. I've asked to hire consultants in the area of Curriculum and Instruction related to Literacy, Language Development, Math, and Inclusion for students with an IEP. I was visiting with some teachers and they actually, they weren't in this district, they were in a different district, but it was very interesting of what they do with their substitute teachers. They have permanent substitute teachers at their schools and when a teacher doesn't call in sick and they're not needed, what they are used as is they're used as intervention specialists. And so what they do, if they're not substituting in the classroom, is they go in and they do intervention for those kids in reading and math and so they can hit possibly five, six classrooms a day. And so I thought that that was an interesting concept, I wasn't quite sure if we've used it here, but just something new, something out of the ordinary, especially at the reading and math scores needing to rise. And also too, I, one of our speakers talked about it, but this was also on my list tonight too for the LCAP, I was going to suggest that single stall bathrooms are installed because I think that that will make everybody feel safe and secure and it's, and it's good for everybody, it's good for everybody, privacy is good, but I also think too, it's just something that maybe we should work to, to go forward to. So yeah, so it was a busy month, there was a lot done and I was only going to read half, but, okay, this is everything I've been working on in the past month and so please continue to email me, text me, message me, however you want to find me and let me know what you guys are thinking because this is what I'm here to do. Thank you.
Wow. Okay, definitely not as, as much as most of my other colleagues here, but this is a good thing about having such a diverse board, you're getting aspects from all over the district and I, I love that. For myself, I have did a couple of, of small things, we, I went to an Eldorado Breakfast with Dr. Matthews and we got to see some, some kids play some amazing music and enjoy a little bit of yogurt and granola, so it was, that was very nice and it was kind of great to see. Also, I had an opportunity to go by the Esperanza High School Showcase, which I thought was pretty amazing. Principal Giles was there and led a, a great group of kids that actually came up and spoke and just talked about these programs that Esperanza was putting out, which was truly a sight to see and then you were able to, to go around and actually look in the classrooms and, and talk to the teachers that were putting on some of these. I went over to the medical section, I don't know why, it just was drawn over there, it's like a little moth to flame type of thing, but needless to say, it was, it was pretty amazing in itself. After which, I've been, been focusing on getting a little more prepared in this position, I have been going through a program for the California Local Elected Officials Site, it's a part of the California Policy Center, they have a Leadership Academy in which I'm attending and learning a lot about different, different aspects of the district, including collective bargaining and, and those, those areas and so it just helps me understand a little more when we start throwing out some of these, these numbers and statistics and just other ways in which we're going to help improve the district and support our teachers and administrators here. So I'm really looking forward to the 2023 school year, I, I really am focused on doing as good a job as I can with the support of this board and these administrators up here, I think it's going to be a pretty amazing year and I appreciate you guys coming out tonight and also, you know, helping out and giving us your advice as well so we can make this all better for our students, so thank you again. And that's going to be the end of my board report and we're going to continue on with the rest of our agenda. Thank you. As I mentioned, General Functions, number one, has already been taken care of, welcome, welcome Mr. Bang one more time. So section, I'm sorry, number two, where I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion on number two.
I'll make a motion to approve the selection of the Firm of Hazard Young and Atia and Associates to conduct a superintendent search.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Trustee Blades and a second by Trustee Frazier, let me turn it over to Dr. Matthews at this point.
Thank you, President Youngblood, trustees and Executive Cabinet. As you are aware, in December, we shared a request for proposals with Superintendent Executive Search Firm Services, we gave that out to two firms before the holiday break and the deadline was on Monday when we returned, January ninth. One firm, Hazard Young, Atia and Associates, turned in a proposal to provide for Superintendent Search Services. As such, a contract to move forward with their firms under General Functions for your consideration this evening. If approved, we will notify Hazard Young and Atia and begin the process of searching for the district's next leader right away. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Any comments?
I have a comment, I asked if we could get this to ESS and Leadership and Associates as well and there was some hiccup in getting it to Leadership and they, they didn't make it in time because of our posting and the delay. ESS chose not to submit anything, but when I go back, I, so we've had them do our searches in the past, Leadership and Associates has done one when we hired Dr. Plutko, ESS we've used a couple of times, even HYA is in one of our, from 2016, we have a bid from them as well. Each of these is all around between twenty-eight thousand dollars to twenty-nine thousand dollars and the HYA is at fifty thousand dollars. Even in their original proposal in 2016, it was the twenty-eight thousand six hundred or five hundred. I think it's a little high because we don't have the opportunity to look at any other bids related to this particular Superintendent Search, I, and, and because Leadership, there was a mix-up in that, I'd like to, to look at theirs at least, if, if there's any will of the board to do that, to save the twenty thousand dollars because it's the same sort of process. So either table it and get a bid from them and look at that, even if we needed to do some sort of special meeting to, to be able to pick between the two, just so we have a second option, or go back to HYA and ask for a reduction in, in their rate, it just seems like a, a lot of additional money that we don't need to spend.
If I may, a point of clarification, the, we had a mistake on our part and Hazard Young, excuse me, Leadership Associates did not get the proposals, they, they did everything they were supposed to do and they were disappointed not to be able to submit an application, so.
So with looking at the fifty thousand dollars, that is with all of it with the advertising, that's like all-inclusive, there's like, that's not just the search firm, it's like everything that could possibly be included. And then also too, I was actually going to say that I think we should go up to the, to the hundred thousand dollar option or up to, doesn't mean that you're going to spend that much, it's just basically what the, you know, that it could be, but they also give you a consulting thing after to help with the transition. And so I think that that would be very beneficial to us to have the supports in because you're bringing in a new superintendent and then they can, they can consult with the board, they can consult the new superintendent and kind of help the transition smooth over. And so HYA is one of the top five search firms in the nation and so I am going to be voting yes tonight on this.
So I think it's, it's not just a drop in the bucket, I think to raise it above the fifty thousand, I think we could do that later if we wanted to engage them for something further, would I be correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. And then I think it would also be beneficial to maybe approve up to fifty thousand with the potential of a negotiation if we can get them down from fifty, I'm just looking at their, their previous searches and in 2019, forty-five, six, in 2020, thirty-nine, five, in 2018, forty-five, 2018, sixty-two thousand, I mean, so they're kind of all over the board as far as what they've done. I don't feel uncomfortable with that number, as long as we get what we pay for, which, I mean, that's kind of the name of the game when we're looking at this kind of stuff. But it would be helpful to have another number to gauge against, however, we have their previous contracts that they did, so I feel comfortable with the fifty, but I wouldn't want to raise it and I would want to go up to fifty if you can negotiate that down.
I was just going to say, you know, we have a bidding, one of our board policies talk about bidding, getting competitive bids and because Leadership Associates didn't get it, I think it would be prudent to give them a chance to submit something so we have some comparison, so we know what we're, we're spending our dollars on. I don't have a problem with this firm, you know, or spending the money, but I also really like the B portion of this, but to me, the B portion sounded really expensive at a hundred thousand, is that like fifty thousand for the search and then an additional hundred thousand for the B portion?
No, it's an additional fifty, it sounds like.
So that part was unclear and so that was not clear and so, because it says B portion a hundred thousand and it doesn't say like A and B, you know, so I think there's just some things that we need to double check on before we vote on this. I, I think we, we, to follow our board law procedures, that we need to, you know, get competitive bids and because of the mistake, you know, I think another couple of weeks is not going to make or break us, we're really early in the, in the Superintendent Search.
What's our timing?
We need to move.
I mean, we're, we're in a crunch, so how fast could we do anything different?
We want to be moving soon.
Yeah.
But two weeks isn't going to make or break us, right?
If we wanted to do that, which I, I'm not opposed to, we would need to have a, a meeting sooner than two weeks out and we could do that, we could make, do one even later this week.
Do you have the proposal from Leadership?
I have a proposal from them.
Oh, okay.
So you do have, we just didn't get it in time for this?
Right.
Okay.
I have a proposal, it's for about twenty-nine thousand dollars and, but I, I think that we, we shouldn't consider that at tonight's meeting because it wasn't agendaized and so we would need to do a separate meeting for that and we could do that.
Okay, so I understand, a special board meeting, maybe set for next week?
We could do it early next week, sure, yeah.
I, I think we should move forward with the vote on this, this is a top five, this is a top five consulting firm in the nation and it's up to fifty thousand, it doesn't mean, I mean, if these guys find somebody in thirty days, I would doubt highly that it's going to take fifty thousand, fifty thousand dollars. And so I think we should just move, they got their stuff in very quickly and so I think we should, I think we should, we should move, I think we should move on this because who knows how long this process is going to take.
Does it say, I don't see it saying up to fifty thousand dollars in their proposal, that's what we're suggesting.
But to your point, Mr. Frazier, we could certainly say negotiate up to fifty thousand dollars, we could do that.
We can amend that, we can negotiate up to it.
Yes.
Trustee Bang.
I, I would like to table it and go back to them and ask them what they can come back to, I'd like to see if they can bring it down to the, to the thirty thousand or right around there, like they've submitted, I don't have any problem with this firm at all, we've even gotten, in the past, we've had them submit, but when you're looking at twenty thousand dollars for the same amount of work, I just have a really hard time when it could be utilized in a different way. HYA is a national firm and they have some great candidates that they've, that they've placed, so is Leadership and Associates, Leadership is, tends to be more California-based, so that could be advantageous to us or not, we typically- We typically have hired people that are in California, actually for, as long as I've been on the board. Not that that's what we necessarily should do, that's some, a discussion that we could have with the leadership of whoever we choose. But it does say $50,000 here and that it adds on the governance and administrative support as an additional 100, $100,000. They do have the advertising package that comes in it, in the back, but there are also additional ones that, that they recommend, but those are additional cost. So I just, to be fiscally responsible, I think we should look at two of them and make the choice from there and have at least the opportunity to look at the two contracts.
So if Leadership, do they only go in California?
I don't know.
Okay, because this one will go national and so if they don't find a candidate who we're looking for in California, they will take this to national. So I feel like we shouldn't.
I think if we could ask them that, we just, in the past have not gone national, so that wasn't something that we were considering.
Since they will go national, I think we should make sure we're not just only holding ourselves to California, that we should, if there are far perfect superintendent, besides Dr. Matthews, of course, is in, you know, Oklahoma or, you know, Chicago, then we should be able, you know, to find it. I wouldn't want to just keep ourselves in California.
I know in the past, I can't remember what the superintendent's name is, but somebody can correct me, he came from Florida. And so, you know, we've had national superintendents before from different states, but I think it would be really good to put the two proposals together to compare and contrast. You know, maybe Leadership is not providing all the services and so that makes the difference of the $20,000. We don't know that until we look at it. And so that's why I think we just, you know, we can meet later this week or early next week at a special board meeting and just review the two packets. And that would be the only agendaized item.
I personally feel pretty comfortable with the, the HYA. I believe we are kind of in a time crunch as Dr. Matthews was mentioning and so, yeah, so there. So we're going to go ahead and, so we're going to go ahead, I have a motion, I have a second, let's go ahead and vote on the selection of the firm.
Are we, are we amending the, what we're approving, up to 50,000?
Up to 50,000, yes.
That's agreed on, you guys have to agree on, on that emotion, that amendment.
So, so is that an additional vote?
No, I mean, I think if we're agreed that the motion on the floor has been changed to that.
Okay. All right, so the...
Okay, just a second.
Yes, ma'am.
In all fairness and transparency, I just want to say that even with the amendment, I will be voting no because I really feel like it goes against our board policies. 3310, 3212, and 3324. And I want, and I think another day where we can, it's 24-hour notice for special board meetings, another day just to have a compare and contrast look. And I've heard several trustees up here complain about spending $15,000 for a school program and things like this and, and we're, we're talking $20,000. And, you know, it might be, it totally might be justified. And, and, and if it is, then, you know, let's go move forward. Like I said, I don't have a problem with the search firm and I don't have a problem with the services, you know, I read through the contract.
Well, I think if we're going to start going that route, then when we get contracts up here for $800,000 for iReady, we should be able to also have, nobody's giving us three or four different, different things for all of these things. We get one and we've asked for what's the backup. We don't have a backup, you just need to vote on this. So it's in the same thing, so then we would have to go across the board. And so we've been handling business this way and so I'm, I'm ready to vote.
If I, if I may, I, I believe that we are following board policies with regard to bidding. I, I think the question before you is whether you want to consider the other firm. I think it's a legitimate question and so I, I'll honor the board's decision on this.
President Youngblood.
Yes, ma'am.
In, in all fairness as well, I want to be transparent, I will be voting no for this as well. I think the additional $20,000 to, to pay for this without reviewing both of them is, it potentially could be worth it, but I don't know that for sure, so I can't in good conscience vote for that.
Okay, anything else? All right, so we have a motion on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those against?
No.
No.
All right, so the motion carries 3-2 with an aye from our student board member.
We will reach out to them tomorrow and begin this process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And could I clarify, you're going to try to negotiate down lower?
Correct.
Okay.
Any motion?
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with Horbach, Orbach Huff and Henderson LLP's attorney at law for January 18th to June 30th, 2023. And as also, as amended, as part of this motion, I move to include with it direction to the superintendent to transfer all active litigation and transactional matters currently being handled by a current firm to Orbach Huff and Henderson.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Dr. Matthews.
Okay, so I, I'll speak about the firm first of all. Our school district uses a variety of legal firms for legal services in different areas. Orbach Huff and Henderson is a respected and competent legal firm that works for school districts and other entities and their fees for services are competitive. With regard to the second part of the motion, I've never met anyone from the law firm, I look forward to getting to know them. I look forward to seeing what services they can provide for us. I believe that our job is to make sure we legally handle all the matters of the district and, so I would like to meet them and talk about their, you know, what, what they can offer us and I do not recommend the second part of this at this point because there's just too much I don't know and I think it could be putting the district at legal risk. In terms of transition, that could perhaps be, very much be the, the eventual outcome, but to start doing that tomorrow when many projects are going on right now legally would be dangerous to the district.
Okay, questions? Comments? Will there need to be an amendment for...
I think the, you, you proposed it in an amended fashion, so there's no amendment, that's already been, already happened.
Okay, in the board packet, it says that a board member requested this law firm and I'm just curious, which board member requested this law firm?
That was Ms. Blades.
Thank you. And then, Mrs. Blades, is there any conflict of interest between you and this law firm? Have you utilized this law firm before?
No.
And, and how did you come across them?
So when someone was seeing how we were being represented by Todd Robbins and Atkinson, they said that Orbach Huff and Henderson is a board, is, represents about 140, I think to 200 school boards across California. And they said that what is different about them is that they work for the board. As of right now, sometimes it feels that Atkinson works with the district and the superintendent, but they have a lot of freedom and this firm believes that the board actually is the district. And so you are free to pick up the phone and call them if you have anything with ed code, anything at all. And so basically, when I asked them a lot of questions, they were, you know, able to cite ed code and they represent a lot of school districts also in Los Angeles County as well. They're obviously not as big as Atkinson is, but they are reputable and they gave a lot of great information. And so due to some of the issues that we've been having with Atkinson and then also some surrounding issues that Atkinson has just had, probably I would say in the last two weeks, I think that making a move to Orbach Huff and Henderson would be a great move for the district.
Can you talk about what's happened in the last two weeks?
Santa Monica, they just lost a $45 million lawsuit over special ed. There's also been some allegations, that's also happened, that I'm not going to speak to because I'm not quite sure, but just as the last, it was a hot topic, a lot of these things at the last, at a superintendent's meeting this week or last week. And also too, if you, if we want to speak to this, we can talk about the lack of due process that was given to us by our previous superintendent and our attorney Todd Robbins in dealing with the district attorney. That was a due process violation for the constitution, of the 14 amendment of the constitution. And so I don't really, and I'm seeing as well, Atkinson's also been out in Temecula Valley, they represent their district and suddenly their new board members, he's been stating that there's possible Brown Act violations out there as well, when he wasn't even involved in the meeting. And so I just think there's just a lot of, a lot of issues that are kind of surrounding them and I think that a new law firm, they're a law, I mean, it's, it's a law firm, they're reputable and we don't have to, just because we've been with Atkinson since 1985 doesn't mean we have to stay with them forever.
Could you go into more explanation about the due process thing that you said that Atkinson did?
Yeah, so when you are accused of something, right, you are supposed to be able to answer as to what your, what, what happened, what your mentality was, what all this stuff was. We had Dr. Elsasser and Todd Robbins talking to the DA's office and I never gave them any type of authority to speak for me. In fact, I told them both, they do not speak for me. And so we were accused of a potential Brown Act violation without ever being interviewed. That is a due process violation and my attorney sent that over to the DA's office. And so I don't appreciate any attorney who's supposed to be representing our board and our district's best interests if they can't even provide their client with due process. And I also have some other thoughts about how some other matters were handled by Atkinson during this school year and the type of things that happened. And I don't think that that was in the best interest of our district as we can see the many lawsuits that have piled up because of it. And so I don't have faith in them any longer. I don't know, do you have something else to say?
I think you know my, my stance on it. I had absolutely no, no investigation done with my, my own accusation of a Brown Act violation, so I don't feel comfortable with them as well.
Just, just so I'm clear on this too, I, I don't think that Axon Anderson was even asked about either of you.
They were, they were.
I, I...
We, Todd Robbins told us, exactly. And we know that we were never asked and that the past superintendent and Todd Robbins were the ones talking to them, we were never spoken to.
I mean, in all of my interactions with the firm, they did not say they were asked about you, they were asked about the meetings.
But this is when Elsasser was here.
Correct.
And the other, other issue I had with that is I didn't realize that Dr. Elsasser was, was brought in by ESS. And if you look on the ESS website, they are underneath the AALRR or Atkinson, they are a part of that, that law firm. It, it doesn't matter, there's a conflict of interest when it comes to that. So that's actually a violation for him to be hired through, through that, that whole process. So that also kind of banged the, the bell for me at least for Atkinson.
I disagree, that's a violation. It seems to me with what we're doing here is we'll be terminating, it looks like what we'll be terminating AALRR based on the interest of the conversation. I think that we have had good representation by AALRR. I think that dropping them without investigating this, this particular firm and making sure that they can do all of the work that we need them to do, especially in a, in a quick turnaround like this is, is irresponsible. I'm going to vote no.
How many, if we were to turn everything over tomorrow, how many cases, I mean, what are we talking about?
I don't, I don't have that in front of me. I know that we are working with, on Title IX cases, I know that we're working on special education cases, I know that, I mean, I would say we probably dozens.
Yeah.
So when we asked in December for this, how come the work wasn't done? When we brought this up in December, how come nobody went about this and started this work?
I, I think that the priority has been on meeting a new law firm, that the board, I mean, that, I did not know whether the board wanted to hire or not, I heard it from one board member. We can, if the board does pass that tonight, and I've already shared this, we'd be happy to meet with the firm and talk about what they can provide for us, up to and including what you just talked about.
So I just want to be clear, the district hasn't done any, you know, due diligence on searching this law firm to make sure they can adequately fill our needs as a district.
This was not our request. This is, and so we, again, if the board wants this firm to meet with them, that's one, I have no objection to that, but if we want to move to something where it's using the entire, filling all of our legal needs, I want to meet with them and then, and find out what they can and cannot do.
I mean, I looked at the website and they cover all of, I mean, everything's there. The, the thing that I would be, I'm a little bit hesitant on is the immediate moving of everything to make sure that we don't rock the boat in transition, because I think that's the goal. But I think the, the potential issues of severing immediately could have some potential issues.
Also, I wanted to point out that this is not to exceed $150,000. And, you know, I, we get our lovely list of expenditures every week and you can start adding up how much we spend for attorneys and this would, I think this would be exhausted if everything was turned over, what, in like three months?
But then we wouldn't be paying the other firms, I don't know if that's...
But if, if we switch everything over, we don't, even this motion is inadequate to cover that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but we could come back to you and ask for more. We can, that's, that, that happens. I mean, and so we, we, that, that's, I'm far more worried about putting the district in a very disadvantaged position and, and harming the district than I am about coming back to you to request more funds.
So what, I guess what we could do is you have it down, or staff has it down, as facilities.
With the law firm, if you read their contract, they list it as facilities.
Right, that's what I'm reading right now. And also, so what if we amend it and say we will approve this agreement and then also that we would like them to advise our board on legal issues, contracts, et cetera. And then we'll have a meeting next week and we'll see what they offer, which they offer everything, and then we can start the transition on the February 7th board meeting. We could vote for that after everybody is, has met, talked, and we're good to go. But I think if we do the facilities as requests or as stated right now and then we also bring them in for advice for board, for counsel, for contracts, whatever comes our way from here in the February 7th board meeting, I would be, I think that that could be appropriate in the interim.
And also I'd like us to research the due process thing allegation because if my memory serves me correctly, they did not contact anyone at the district, they just watched our videotapes. And so they did their full investigation and if I'm wrong, someone please correct me without contacting anybody at the district office, so...
No, that's incorrect because myself and Sean both talked and they both, it was Todd Robbins and it was Elsasser and they were doing all of the communication for us.
So I just would like some clarification on that.
And just to be clear too, we use several legal firms in the district. I know special ed uses other firms too. And so are you talking about eventually... I know special ed uses other firms too. And so, are you talking about eventually moving all work over to this one firm? Okay. I can provide, I can get more information about that process too. I believe that transition, it would be very difficult in the short term, but I can find that out for you.
And also to know how many other law firms do we have working for us?
Sure.
I mean, I'd be curious, because
Sure.
the only agreement that I'm, that I have a hold of is the, the AALR.
Yeah.
Okay, so, should I amend the motion again and state that we will approve the agreement with Orbach Huffin Henderson LLP Attorneys at Law January eighteenth to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three? And also, that they will provide our board with legal services in areas of contracts, any type of negotiations, things like that? Would that be an appropriate thing to do?
Well, it says and on other matters.
Right, on other matters. But I think specifically, if something arises in the next couple of days, do we want to have Todd Robbins, or do we want to have somebody else from?
Or maybe all, all future?
All future board matters?
Board matters.
That would be your choice, I mean, and I can.
All future board matters.
And if we have a problem with it, can't we change it later?
You can change, you can always change it.
I mean, that's, that's the beauty of it, is if we do have an issue, we can.
Right. So, what is, what is the motion now?
The motion would be approve the agreement with Orbach Huffin Henderson LLP Attorneys at Law for January eighteenth to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and also, they would deal with all board matters. So, it would be the facilities and all board matters.
Oh, I was just going to say, can we table it till we've had more due diligence by the superintendent and researching?
Researching what?
I believe he's.
The, the services, you know.
Well, we know that they, they provide all the services, and we know they provide board support and facilities, and that was brought forward. So, just with the facilities, everybody was fine with that. So, we're just adding board support.
Right, and I'm just, I'm just saying, let's do some due diligence, let's reach out to the law firm. Let's make sure that they can, we're a big district, so we have lots of.
I've, I spoke with them personally and they can do it.
Okay, I'm just saying, let's just do our due diligence and, and let Dr. Matthews and his staff, Dr. Giardano, you know, do, do some more research. Because I think it would just be really good to research that and know for sure that they can handle our district size and our scope of projects.
So, what are we voting on?
I'm ready to vote on the motion.
I think the motion, as I have it, is the same motion except it's also to deal with all board matters.
Okay.
That's what you have?
Okay. Yeah, that's what we have on, so the amended agenda. We already have a motion and a second. So, all those in favor of the amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
So, we have a, we, the motion passes three-two with a, a no from our student board member. Let's move on to number four. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt revised board policy four-one-four zero point one, four-two-four zero point one, Employee Assistant Program, second reading.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Trustee Blades, second by Trustee Anderson. Dr. Lopez, if you would.
Thank you. Good evening, President Youngblood, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Matthews, and Executive Cabinet. Tonight on the agenda is the second reading of a proposed revision to board policies forty-one forty point one, forty-two point forty point one, Employee Assistance Program. The revision of this policy will provide more information about the program, its confidentiality, and the role of management to make employees aware of it. There were no suggested edits provided at the first reading. Thank you for your consideration of this proposed revision.
Okay, any, any comments?
Yeah, I have like two comments. First, I wanted to ask, and this is going to be a reoccurring question, because I'm trying to create transparency. Is this policy constructed with the changes consistent with the GAMET program that we purchased through CSBA?
It is.
Okay. And then, if we didn't have, if we were not members of CSBA and had GAMET, can you give me an estimate of how much this, to revise this bylaw would be?
Through legal, like consultation with legal?
Yeah, having to hire a law firm to review it and make sure that all ed code and et cetera is followed.
I would, a policy like this, I would imagine a few hundred dollars.
A few hundred dollars? Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Comments? Okay, so, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, that's five plus our yes for our student board member. All right.
I'll make a motion, we adopt revised board policy six-one-one-two, official school hours, second reading.
I'll second.
Yes, Dr. Lopez, one more time, please.
Thank you. Tonight on the agenda is the second reading of a proposed revision to board policy sixty-one twelve, official school hours. The revision of this policy is driven by Senate Bill three-twenty-eight, which caused an adjustment to school start times in our district. We now have varied school start times by grade level and are updating this policy to provide flexibility for the shift in start times by grade level, in lieu of setting one timeframe for all school offices. Thank you for your consideration of this proposed revision.
I have nothing.
Comments?
Yeah, I'll ask my two favorite questions. Is this policy constructed with the changes consistent with GAMET and the CSB board policy program?
This change was driven by the late start schedule, so it wasn't so much driven by GAMET, although the original language may have been, but these proposed revisions were not driven by that.
And then, we didn't use GAMET at all to revise the language?
We did not.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's five plus our student board member. Next item?
I will make a motion to establish board policy thirty-five fifteen, security cameras, first reading.
All right, I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Giardano, if you would.
Absolutely. Well, thank you and good evening. It's my pleasure to invite Mr. Jeremy Powell, our district's chief technology officer, to the podium. And Mr. Powell, we're going to introduce recommended board policy thirty-five fifteen, security cameras, first reading.
Good evening, President Youngblood, members of the board, Superintendent Matthews, and Executive Cabinet. Included on the agenda tonight is the first reading of proposed board policy three-five-one-five, security camera systems. This policy states that security cameras are utilized to protect facilities and enhance safety. It confirms that security cameras will be placed and utilized in accordance with legal requirements, such as disabling audio recording, and that security cameras will only be used in public areas where there is no reasonable expectation of privacy. This includes building entrances, parking lots, lunch areas, hallways, and front offices. Security cameras will not be installed in any private areas, such as restaurants, locker rooms, changing areas, and private offices. Security cameras have been a part of our high school campuses without issue since twenty eighteen.
Awesome. Any questions for?
I have a request that we include any reference policies related to this in the back of the policy as we do on other ones, if we're referencing, as it mentions. And then, secondly, I want to make sure that we keep our administrative regulations that list who is able to see the videos and in what capacity, and the limitations on that.
Thank you, Board Trustee Buck. We can make those additions to the policy and bring it back for a second reading.
Thank you.
The administrative regulation does list how authorized positions are handled.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd really like to see the board policy state, like, who would be authorized to use these? Who would be, you know, monitoring them? Also, it's from the data I was reading from the company, is it, they only keep the images for thirty days, is that correct?
The servers are local, and it's thirty to sixty days. It's configured with a maximum of ninety days.
Okay, and what is our policy going to be?
So, we let it keep as much up to ninety days, but the existing servers are storing between thirty to sixty days, depending on the campus.
Their capacity?
Yes.
Okay. So, also, I just, it doesn't sound like we're going to be having live footage? Like monitors where people could watch these live stream, is that, or, you know, in, in the office, like a monitor? Real-time footage, is that correct?
We, we don't have staff to live monitor the camera.
Could we put it in the policy that we won't have live monitoring? And this, the only reason why I'm doing it is, it's a security thing. We have students, you know, you'd have to have it in a lockdown facility, and you would have students and parents, and, and that, that stuff should be kept private. And I, I just feel like it's a privacy thing.
It's public areas.
Correct. And, and haven't you seen everybody gathered on a phone watching something, you know?
Well, okay, being available on YouTube is not a good idea. But having a bank of monitors if we had security staff, I, I think putting that in the policy to say we will never do that is not a good idea.
Well, I think it's something to put in there for now until you have appropriate storage, staff, and personnel to, to monitor it. I mean, that's not the, that's not the intent of this board policy. The board policies for security, if incidents come up, so that it can be reviewed.
But let's look at, what we need to talk about is if you do need to watch something in real time because you have an actual situation kicking off. What if you have an active shooter? You need to be able to watch these cameras and to see, and you would need to see where people are, if you have a fight, if you have some type of incident happening on the campus, to not be able to watch a camera in live, live time, I think is irresponsible.
Having that monitored as far as who can do that and when?
Yeah, of course. But I think that to, to be able to access that to live, I mean, that is an invaluable. But that's, that's an invaluable tool, to be able to watch things happen live, especially if something actually super serious happens.
I could see the purpose of watching it, like, if an incident is happening, but just to have it on and visual, you know, unless it's a cure.
Yeah. To the policy.
I, I don't agree with that, because why, why have, I mean, why have them if you're just going to review it? You can be proactive with these cameras. I mean, there's, there are ways to be proactive with it, and I think we should utilize them, or security, it's security, so.
I think the most important thing that we do is identify who's able to see the video. And if we're identifying that and the reasons why they would be able to do that, it's not just because they're sitting there because they're on break. But.
Not in the quad.
Not, yeah, not just hanging out. They're all, you know, taking lunch, so they'll just go watch that for fun. But no, specifically, who is going to watch it and why? If there's a specific incident coming up, then, you know, who's the one that's tapped to do that?
Is that something that we would put in a policy like this, or is there some other document that we refer to for that?
So, typically, we'd put that in administrative regulation?
Yep.
And that's where we intend to have it. We already have a draft of that as well.
And I'm sure we aren't talking about having a bunch of students watching live feed. I'm sure we're talking about having staff and administrators the one that's going to access this, and possibly police officers and personnel.
SROs.
I mean, at this time, we, we don't have staff to watch a live feed, absent some sort of extraordinary circumstance.
Typically, if we have an incident happening, we're out there dealing with it.
Right, so it's staff.
If the police have an incident, they're, I mean, what I love about all of our law enforcement authorities is if there's a problem, they are coming in. And so, they are not going to go look at a video camera, they're coming in.
Yeah, I think it's two different situations that you would need to see live feed. If it's a static situation, there should be only authorized personnel looking at that at all. If it is an emergency situation, then that is a whole different matter, and there should be something drawn up based upon that.
Thank you for that feedback. I, I think we can take that forward.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Any other questions?
Okay, my two favorite questions of the day. Was this board policy produced with GAMET, the program through CSBA?
Yes.
And if we were to use this, if we were to develop this through an attorney, can you give me an estimate of like how many hours something like this would cost to come up with?
I'll turn that back over to David Giardano and/or Superintendent Matthews.
Yeah, so the, the standard billing rates would apply, whatever the amount of hours would be required for the attorney to review it, they would simply charge us their standard billing rates. And, and a policy like this on cameras, again, going back to Dr. Lopez's answer, it's probably going to be a few hundred dollars.
Yeah, I respectfully think it'd be more than that. If you look at all the legal references down there, they wouldn't get checked those. And so, a new policy like this could be extensive. I, I think it could be ten to twenty hours or even more of, of creating this item.
So, we're looking at, what is the attorney rate?
Two, two or three thousand dollars.
Two or three thousand dollars?
It would depend on who they use. Are you going to use a paralegal? I mean.
Right, there's different rates, exactly.
So, it could be.
And is this one of those that you can look at a different district to see what they have? So, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel here?
Right, we, we would, we want to, either we rely on a firm like GAMET to do the research for us and verify it, or sure, we could research other firms, but you still, the district, but you still need someone to tell you this, they're doing it right. Because I, 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 I want someone assuring us that our policies are in good working order.
If it was a district that's already had an issue, maybe active shooter or something, I'm sure that they have developed policies that are probably pretty shored up well. Would that be something we could?
I think that makes perfect sense, but I, I think, again, if, if there is a problem and our policy is found not in compliance, and they ask us how we developed it, and we say, well, we looked at their district and copied that, that's just not a good reason. I mean, you want to be able to say, we researched it, we, we analyzed it, we looked at ours, at the law, and you want a good answer to that question.
Do we have any reason to think that this isn't a good?
This is.
I don't understand why we keep asking this question.
This is, we believe this is great. This is verified by GAMET. We, this is a great policy.
Good to go.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second already. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? All right, the motion carries five plus our student board member.
Okay, I'll move on, if that's okay. I'll make a motion that we approve agreement with Orange County Superintendent of Schools and the OC Pathways Regional K-16 Education Collaborative Grant Program and the inter-agency data sharing agreement.
I'll second.
All right, so, Ms. Buck and Trustee Blades. And this is under curriculum and instruction. Let's go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Anderson. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, good evening, President Youngblood, members of the board, Superintendent Matthews, and Executive Cabinet. We are bringing back for your approval this evening, the Orange County Pathways Regional K-16 Education Collaborative Grant and Interagency Data Sharing Agreement. Approval of this agreement will allow us to receive a total of three-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars allotted through the grant to be spent over the next four years to help gauge the success of our various career technical educational programs, otherwise known as our CTE programs, which are offered through our Career Link Academies at each of our four comprehensive high schools. These include academies such as Alderado's Ed Law Academy, Esperanza's Medical Science Academy, Valencia's Valtech Academy, and Yorbalinda High School's Mustang Business Academy, to name just a few. While we have received several grants in the past to help fund these CTE programs, until now, there has not been a system in place to effectively measure the impact of the funds and the overall success of the programs that are offered. The data component of this grant is intended to do just that. The central question raised by several trustees at our December meeting involved the nature of how data would be shared and what precautions are in place to ensure confidentiality. We have since confirmed with OCDE that all data will be disaggregated to exclude personal information and all FERPA, that's our Family Education Rights and Privacy Act regulations, will be in place to order, in order to ensure student privacy. To be clear, no data associated with any single student will be provided or released in this process. We're grateful for your support as we see. We're grateful for your support as we seek to continue strengthening and improving improving these high quality programs that ensure the continuation of education to career pathways by offering both college and career credit attainment to our students and ensuring broader access for all students to vocational and workforce programs. Our Director of High School, Ms. Gina Aguilar, who oversees our CTE programs, is available to respond to any additional questions that you might have regarding the data collection process.
Any questions? Comments?
Is is this gonna be, are we designing a new program to support our existing programs? Or is it just gonna be in addition to what we have?
Our goal is to expand the work-based learning opportunities in our programs for students. So right now we have robust externship and internship programs in a couple of our academies, but they are not a function of some of our other academies. And so the goal is to look at all of the programs we offer to students and start developing that component, which like I said, is only in some of our programs.
I do have a question, are we going to expand this into service learning or internships through the Venture Academy for our adult transition program?
This money right now is for our CTE programs only. But I think as we take a look at our TK through twelve college and career readiness plan, which is something we're excited to share with you in the coming months, we really are taking a look at this from a global perspective and not just a high school CTE program perspective. So we've done an excellent job creating these programs in our district, expanding our opportunities for our high school students. And this is another opportunity to do that, but we're starting to look at how do we start developing these programs for students at all ages and for all students and Venture Academy. Um, I'm familiar with a lot of the programs they have with their work-based learning and that's another opportunity to include all students. But we have to, you know, for this particular funding, it's dedicated towards our high school CTE programs.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any more comments? Okay, with that, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye, and the motion carries five plus one student board member, thank you. Okay, guys, I have eight twenty-two right now, let's go ahead and take about five minutes restroom, stretch your legs and we'll meet back here at eight thirty, eight three zero, thank you. Get started, sorry about that, I know, I just enjoy hitting that thing. Very seldom do I get the whole one of these, so it's like, gotta use the opportunity while I can. Okay, here we are back at our January seventeenth board meeting. It is twenty thirty, we are in curriculum and number two, I believe, the adopted expanded learning opportunity. May I get a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to adopt the expanded learning opportunities plan.
I'll second.
So I got a motion by Trustee Blades, motion by Trustee Anderson, and Dr. Adamson, if you would.
Absolutely, thank you, and good evening once again, President Youngblood, members of the board, Superintendent Matthews, Executive Cabinet, and members of the community. It's our pleasure to present to you this evening, a summary of Placentia Yorbalinda's Plan for the Expenditure of the Funds Associated with the Expanded Learning Opportunity Program, otherwise known as the ELOP. ELOP is California's response to the increasing need for after-school care for a growing number of low-income families across the state who are struggling to not only find but also afford after-school programs to accommodate their working schedules. It is intended to help accelerate student learning and restore their well-being through increased opportunities to interact with their peers and build social skills while also supporting struggling parents and guardians in providing for their families by keeping their children safe and engaged after the school day ends. In accordance with the state requirements for this ongoing funding, we're presenting our proposed plan for your approval this evening. The plan details how we intend to utilize the associated funds to support our students of highest need through the offerings of before and after-school programs, along with additional programs which meet the extensive ELOP guidelines. It's an exciting prospect which we approach as a rare opportunity to address the significant needs of our students of highest need. For your approval, we've provided each of you with a copy of our proposed plan. Please take note that the proposed examples provided in the plan are certainly not exhaustive and tend to be a little bit more generic in nature, allowing us some flexibility in being able to adapt and adjust as the next few years proceed. Please also note that approval of the plan is time-sensitive, given a little over three million dollars of the funds are required to be spent before the end of the school year prior to June twenty twenty-three. We remain grateful for your support and partnership in this process and remain open to your feedback and suggestions. To walk you through a presentation of the plan, it's my pleasure at this time to introduce to you our Director of Expanded Learning, Dr. George Lopez.
Thank you, Dr. Adamson. Good evening, School Board President Youngblood, members of our School Board, Superintendent Dr. Matthews, Executive Cabinet. It is my pleasure this evening to present a summary of PYL's Expanded Learning Opportunities Program. Expanding Learning Opportunities Program, better known as ELOP in education, is funding that supports our scholars before and after school, summer, winter, spring, spring intercessions. During these times, our team focuses on extra academic curricula, enrichments, and physical activities through hands-on engaging lessons. ELOP also requires all activities to be scholar-centered, data result-driven, and include community partners. ELOP, also known as Assembly Bill one thirty, will provide ongoing funding for before and after-school enrichments as mentioned in the previous slides. What does this mean? It means we have the opportunity to create and offer the best enrichment programs in all of Orange County. Enrichment programs that will include the arts, sports, and academic support. An important piece of information to note, districts do not need to submit an application for these funds, nor may districts opt out. For example, for the twenty-two twenty-three school year, we received three point four million dollars. And for the twenty-three twenty-four school year, we received nine point seven million dollars. In later slides, we will present how the money will be allocated to meet the ELOP requirements. In short, ELOP is a win-win for our scholars, our community, and our district. ELOP will provide access to comprehensive after-school and intercessional expanding learning programs for all TK six unduplicated pupils. That's our low-income students, foster youth, English learners. From this point on of the presentation, unduplicated pupils will be referenced as UPS. ELOP requires that all activities must be designed to complement, not replicate, the activities the students participate in during the school, regular school day. There are a number of mandates and requirements for the implementation of this program. For example, districts must offer no less than nine hours a day that includes both academic instruction and an after-school enrichment program. Services must be offered to fifty percent of our district's UPS. Currently, about ten percent of our UPS are enrolled in our Expanded Learning Fee-Based Programs. Another ten percent are enrolled in our After-School Education and Safety Program, known as ACES. We currently have these ACES programs at our Title I schools. In addition, in addition, staffing ratios for grades one through six must be at twenty to one and TK kindergarten, a ratio of ten to one. Again, these ratios only apply before and after school and during intercession months. Finally, ELOP must operate an additional thirty days outside the regular instructional calendar. And according to ELOP requirements, any fees required to participate in an after-school expanded learning program cannot be charged to any unduplicated pupils, however, may be charged for other student groups. Next, I will share a summary of the actions and programs PYL proposes to implement to meet the ELOP requirements. First, the good news is we currently have before and after-school expanded learning programs at the elementary schools during the school year. Our goal therefore is to increase the enrollment to include more UP students to meet the fifty percent requirement. Second, we plan to expand ACES program at our Title I schools by increasing enrollment and offering the same quality enrichment ELOP will fund. Thirdly, as we meet the requirements to include community partners, we will work with outside vendors to extend and provide additional after-school enrichment activities. Fourth, we will continue to provide winter and spring intercessions and our regular summer programs. And the good news is we are now able to provide access to our UP students free of charge, as mentioned in the earlier slides. Finally, we know that the additional staffing will be needed to support and manage this yearly program. The next slides will show our proposal of how we will meet these needs. In order to plan for the implementation of this program, we needed to make the following projections for both twenty-two twenty-two twenty-three and twenty-three twenty-four school year. These projections were based on on the funding received for that year. Also, it is important to note our proposed projections were determined by the following factors. For example, we must offer the program to fifty percent of our UP students. This will increase our enrollment significantly and will require additional costs. Additional costs such as staffing to meet the twenty to one and ten to one student ratio requirements, thus requiring increasing of work hours and adding health and welfare benefits for staff members who work full-time. In addition to meet the ELOP requirements and providing safety and wellness, we're including our elementary school counselors to help support our students through positive behavior intervention support, PBIS. It is important to note other cost factors must be included to properly operate a high-quality program, such as facilities, healthy snacks, materials, and supplies. Also, it is imperative that we continue to support our ACES program at all our Title I sites. There is a high need for after-school programs at these locations. Our plan will help open more spots to increase enrollment, along with hiring high-quality staff. Last, we know, we now have the opportunity to provide after-school enrichments such as soccer, basketball, and football clinics, dance academies, and the arts and other high-quality enrichment programs that will add much value to a scholar's experience in our school. Mentioned in in the earlier slides, ELOP requirement requirements is to offer a nine-hour daily program for no less than a total of thirty days on non-instructional days. On this slide, our team projected the cost to operate a summer, winter, and spring program at several of our sites. Last, with the increase in student enrollment and staffing, we determined a need for additional support staff to help oversee the thirteen point one million dollars and support the additional increase in hiring and managing staff at our Expanded Learning and ACES sites, as well as our summer, winter, and spring programs. ELOP is a great opportunity for our district. Collectively, we all have a part in delivering the best after-school programs in Orange County. The funding is here. The opportunity to positively positively impact fifty-five hundred of our highest needs TK six scholars is here now, again, supporting our low-income, foster youth, and English learners. However, ELOP will support all our scholars. They will all benefit from these enrichment programs, academic support, along with social and emotional components. Trustees, thank you, thank you for your support, thank you for believing in the great work we continue to do as we prepare to implement these programs and next steps. Thank you for your time this evening, I'm happy to answer any questions or points of clarifications you may have.
Excellent, thank you. All right, comments, concerns?
Okay, as I'm reviewing the budget, I just wanna clarify that we're gonna be using certificated employees for like a some, the summer, spring, I get that the after-school program, but like in the the summer, nine hours a day and in the the spring sessions that are gonna be offered, are we gonna be using certificated staff?
Right on our plan, it's for, it's classified, our classified staff.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay. I think I'm getting the two.
Can I just add to that, if we, you know, what we are considering is for our summer programs, if we are, you know, we, at this point, we've intended to do more enrichment programs, but have done in the past during summer is offer actual instruction. And if that is the case, then yes, we would use that to actually pay certificated staff, so that would be our teachers for tutoring and instruction support.
Okay, cuz I I see this as, you know, extended learning and building in that achievement gap. And I think our certificated staff would be extremely helpful, especially for the long summer and the the spring. I see that it's not always, you know, viable for the after-school, but for this, I would love to see that as well.
We'll definitely make a note of that and we'll, you know, put that into our ongoing plans.
Okay, and then I just wanted to share what I loved about this program. One is I really like that there's active learning, hands-on activities and enrichment. I really enjoyed the part about students and families will have input regarding the programs and activities and that are specific to their interests so that we're really reaching out to the community and fulfilling their needs, what their students need and what they enjoy and bringing it into the school for them. So I really like that and I like, you know, it sounds like that we're gonna, because of this additional funding, we're gonna have a lot of variety and a wide option, you know, before, I think, you know, we were kind of limited to like arts and sports and things like that, but I think we're gonna have a lot more options and I'm really excited to see what the imagination of our families and what they need and and how we can apply that, so thank you.
The community partners, anytime we select a vendor, are those gonna be approved by the board?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Is your mic, is your mic on?
Not, quit turning my mic off, Sean. Um, I was gonna say, Mr. Myers was talking about as, you know, starting to have the younger music program. So I was wondering if like, if there is any, maybe we could ask him, he might know. But is there any like, I mean, these kids, especially at that age, they love to sing. So I mean, maybe it's like if we're gonna start implementing that in elementary school, maybe we could like start to look at the younger ages and like really get that going, that would kind of be a fun thing for them, just a thought.
Absolutely.
I'd love this, I'm so glad that we're gonna have more options for kids. The the one thing though, that it kind of makes me a little uneasy about or concerned about is homework for these kids that are in school and then they're doing pre, before-school and after-school fun activities, enrichment. It, I wanna make sure that we're saving time for the homework as necessary, but also looking at the homework and making sure that we're not, that we're still falling within our guidelines of ten minutes per grade level, or is that something that we need to reevaluate? Um, we really only looked at homework in the elementary level, uh, maybe it's another time to just review it as we're looking along with our expanded learning for after-school. And then, of course, I wanna tackle homework in high school again. But that that is my concern, that even sixth graders, if if we're sticking to the guidelines, it's an hour of work. But if we're at school for nine hours, even with enrichment and another hour of homework, I I I just wanna make sure we're covering all of our bases. And I, and to be honest, I think that this is more important than homework in the elementary level.
I I believe that there is homework time that will be built into the schedule, right, Dr. Lopez?
That is correct, so part of the the requirements of ELOP is that we do provide academic support during that time. Along with the enrichment part.
As we're building it out and as the students are working on that academic time, I wanna make sure we're keeping aware of it. And if kids are having, spending way too much time or they're not completing in the time that is needed, then maybe we address that and make sure that it's not too much for them.
Definitely noted.
Thank you.
Well, it's a great way to measure too, I mean, the fact that we'll be able to see that. Going along with that, on the staff that you're hiring, I'm assuming one of the criteria is gonna be the ability to tutor and be, even though they're classified staff, the learning part of this is going to be one of the criterias for selecting the staff members for this? Yes, question?
Well, the, if there's, if there's tutoring, you know, the component of it, but the majority of this is really for the enrichment, you know, part. And so like, we'll be probably looking and making opportunities available to our aides as an example, who are, you know, instructional aides do in the classroom and and very able, yes, to, you know, provide homework support and even, you know, instructional support in small, you know, group settings. So, you know, we'll definitely make a note of that as well and ensure that we're building a component of that into the program too.
And I think we we had made mention of this once before, I think we had the the answer, but I just wanna make sure the the public understood that this is a program in which will be continuous, it'll get funded. will be continuous, it'll get funding each year, so it's not, it's not something that's a one-and-done type of thing with, with no, you know, no budget money next year for it.
Correct, this is continuous funding.
Okay, any other questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, five plus our student board members.
Thank you, Dr. Lopez.
Okay, that next brings us to our human resources. May I get a motion for?
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement for products and services provided by Informed K-12 beginning January 18th, 2023.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Blades and a motion by Ms. Bach. Dr. Lopez, if you'll introduce this?
Will do. Thank you. Tonight on the agenda is an agreement with Informed K-12 to provide workflow automation and digital form solutions for our business and human resources departments. With your approval, Informed K-12 will replace our current vendor, School Stream, for our Notice of Employment Requisitions and Change Authorizations. Further, Informed K-12 has added features to digitize the paperwork portions of the onboarding process for our new employees. Thank you for your consideration.
I'm sure digitizing is pretty awesome, as opposed to all that paper, but good deal. Questions for Dr. Lopez?
This is an upgrade from what we currently have, this, we talked about something like this.
All right, anyone else?
I just want to confirm that all of our data is, with this as well, all kept confidential.
It is. We were provided a two-page summary of all of the measures that are taken, both for encryption and where they've been authorized, I'm sorry, where they're accredited, they're accredited by five different agencies that have certified their security.
Great, thank you.
And do we get a choice of shredding company that we can use? I want to put stock in them, right?
We will research that.
All right. Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, five plus our student, oh, no vote on this item, so five. All right. Okay, this next item is our consent calendar. The actions proposed for the consent calendar items are consistent with approved practices of the district and are deemed routine in nature. The trustees received board agenda backup information in advance of the scheduled meeting and are prepared to vote with the knowledge on the block vote items. Okay, let me go ahead and get a, any items to be pulled, folks?
Twenty-three.
Number twenty-three. Okay.
Six, seven, eight, and nine.
Oh, geez.
Bring it.
Okay, so for the, aside from the items that were pulled, may I have a motion to approve the remaining?
I will make a motion to approve this consent calendar minus the following items.
Second.
Okay, Trustee Blades, Trustee Frazier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, five plus our student board member. Excellent. Okay, let's take a look at number six. We'll start off small.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 22-13, approving the terms and conditions of grant agreement number 22R3VA1389, funded by the California Schools Healthy Air Plumbing and Efficiency CALSHA program for 30 district sites.
Second.
All right, got a initial motion and a second. Go ahead and tell us your thoughts there, sir.
So, so it kind of, I mean, some of these kind of tie together. As we were talking about what we can do with these funds, I know that it's related to, obviously, the Healthy Air Act and having to do with plumbing and efficiency, is there any other things we can do with those funds?
I'll ask, Mr. Dutton, off that, please. Yeah, so the grant agreements are under the CALSHA program, and they're really specifically outlined in what we could use those dollars for, and it's really to fund the assessment, the maintenance, and the repair of ventilation systems, as well as the installation of carbon monoxide monitors, and then also the replacement of non-compliant plumbing fixtures and appliances. And so a few years ago, we went through and did an assessment of our plumbing fixtures, and we replaced any non-compliant-type fixtures. And so everything that's in the grant agreements that you see before the board this evening is for those other items that I had identified there.
So are the funds already allocated?
Right now, we just have a proposed award for that program, so it's just a proposed award at this point, but we'd expect to be awarded those dollars.
You say efficiency items and maintenance, what about replacement or addition, like, new air quality, air conditioning?
Yeah, it's primarily for the repair and maintenance, and so if there was a replacement-type item, I doubt that that would be, would be covered under this particular grant agreement. There's only a certain amount of dollars that are available, and so it really was, you know, focused in on repair and maintenance.
And this is based on what we gave them to say this is what we need?
Yeah, so they're, exactly. There's really looking at what our needs are. We had a vendor that we worked with that went around and did an assessment with us and helped us put this together.
Okay.
So I guess the next question is, there's no possible way to get an air conditioning in the El Dorado gym in this?
Using this?
Could we, could we try to ask?
Yeah, we checked with our team earlier, but I'll double-check on that. My understanding is no, we couldn't buy any, any type, or replace any type of HVAC system or install an HVAC system of that scope in a gym.
So it truly is for repair, maintenance, efficiency? Okay.
Primarily, yes.
Needed to ask the question?
Yes.
We're trying every angle for that El Dorado gym.
Esperanza, too, don't leave them out.
Esperanza and Valencia.
And Valencia, yes.
Three gyms.
Yes, three of them.
All right, so there you have it. Any more comments? Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Five plus our student board member. Number seven? Trustee Frazier?
All right, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 22-14, approving the terms and conditions of grant agreement number 22R3VA1390, funded by California Schools Healthy Air Plumbing and Efficiency CALSHA program for four district sites.
Second.
All right.
So my question here was, why are these separate?
Yeah, it's a good question, and so it's really how the grant was awarded. There's different sponsoring agencies that support those two different grant agreements. So one's with Southern California Edison, and the other one's with the Southern California Gas Company, and that's the only reason why they're separated. It's very unusual, but that's.
Used for the same purpose?
Same, same exact, yes.
Okay, any other questions? Let's go ahead and take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries, five plus one. Let's get a motion for number eight.
All right, I'll make a motion, since I polled it. Approve contract renewal per RFP number 2019-06 for HVAC air duct cleaning services with Western Indoor Environmental effective January 18th, 2023 through January 15th, 2024.
I'll second.
Basically, my question was just, do we have competing bids, or is this, I mean, is it a renewal?
Yeah, so we went out for an RFP several years ago, and so this is just a renewal of that, of that contract.
Is there any reason to go out and get more RFPs and see if we can do better, or?
You know, we, it's something that we would typically do, we'd go out every so often and check pricing. On this one, given the environment, I'd be a little nervous to go out again at this point, just to see if there was additional, you know, better pricing. I'd probably recommend that we stick with what we have at this point, and then when it's up for renewal again, I think this is the last year of this renewal, we go and, you know, go out to bid again.
Okay.
Is it true that we get to, we get to renew three times, right?
Each RFP's different, and so it's up to five years. Typically, we like to keep it in the three-year range, but occasionally we'll go up to five years on a bid.
All right, any other questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries, five plus our student board member. Number nine, I need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Architectural Services Agreement for Architectural Design Services for the Large Fan Project at El Dorado High School with Studio Plus Architecture Corp., effective January 18th, 2023 through June 30th, 2024.
I'll second.
How fast is this project going to be finished?
Yeah, you know, this is a project that we need some, some time. More than likely, we'd need a break period, like spring break, to do those installations because of the, you know, the size of the fans, the workers that would be involved. And so this is something we probably need to schedule either in spring break or summer. And so, but the work itself, you're probably looking at a couple of weeks worth of work, and so we could probably spring it, you know, schedule it in spring break, but we'd need to work with our contractors to make sure that we can make that happen.
I just was surprised it was an 18-month contract for that.
Yeah, this was just for the architectural services portion of it, and it was really just to keep a large window, just moving forward, just so we captured the entire timeframe. If we were going to schedule this out longer, we'd have longer time to do that.
So this is just for the design of?
That's it. That's just the design. Correct.
And then we would have to?
Actually purchase the fans as well. Correct.
So we've still got a while.
Yes, yeah, it's going to take, the designs for something like this, I wouldn't expect would take too long to do, they're pretty standard. It's not like that we would be, you know, installing a new HVAC system over in a gymnasium. That would be much more time-intensive, would have to go through the DSA process. I believe there's already pre-approved drawings for these type of fan installations, and so I wouldn't expect the actual architectural work to take that long.
Okay, so it could move quickly, then?
I think it's possible.
Okay.
It's possible. I'd have to check with our maintenance facilities team, who's probably listening in at this moment, and wanted to make sure that I don't commit into anything that I shouldn't, so I'll double-check with them, but obviously, we'll move forward as quickly as possible.
Okay, good.
So if they are listening, they, if we can't get this air conditioning done by summer, when they said it was 105, if they're listening, can we try to get the fans in at least for, by the summertime?
That's, that's, that's this, right?
Right, the fans.
Those fans, absolutely. That's what we're shooting for.
Perfect.
That sounds good. Yeah, I can't imagine being in that heat in the summer, playing in an indoor.
Bakersfield at Esperanza, two summers ago for CIF was 105. I don't know why, how the girls didn't just fall over. I did in the stands.
Okay.
The girls are tougher.
I know, it's true.
With that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, five plus our student board. The last?
That was me.
One?
I'll make a motion to approve the School District Placement Agreement with the University of Southern California from January 18th, 2023 to June 30th of 2026.
I'll second.
Okay.
Okay.
So my question was, is, and I asked this earlier, and we didn't, we haven't really been going outside to find more of our student teachers and the counselors. And University of Southern California was just in the news about they are removing the word "fields" apparently from their university because of racist connotations. And so I've also been doing some research, and I was curious if the USC is aware of our CRT ban, if they are going to abide by it. But then another thing was, is this contract was obviously for a three-year time period. And so I was curious if all of them were for three years. But then another thought is, the income of $350 for each master teacher, how long is this time period for, for the master teacher? Like, how long, how long would this, how long would this period be, like, when they get the student teacher, is it a semester? Is it a quarter?
Semester is common, there are some variations from university to university, but generally they look to have them have experience in multiple places.
Okay, so my only other thought, too, was I wanted to make sure, possibly before we voted on this, that have we consulted any other colleges that surround us? Are they aware of our critical race theory ban? And is their intention to not teach it or not? But then another thought is, can we renegotiate the terms? Because $350 for a master teacher for, like, how many months? That's like $50 a month to be instructing. I mean, does that sound a little, is that normal, or can we try to get maybe a little bit more for our teachers? Because that's a tough job, and they're doing a lot of work, and $350 over six months is not much. So I was just curious about these questions. And another question, too, was, have we ever thought about contracting with our students, some of our student teachers with historical black colleges? That's another thought that's kind of crossed my mind. Have we, like, reached out to that to give some of our kids some exposure to those teachers and to those colleges and institutions like that? So that's kind of my question going forward.
I can respond to some of those, and some others, I can provide some updates. With regards to the stipend amount, it does vary from university to university, but that is not an uncommon dollar amount, and certainly wish that it could be more, but.
Can it be more? Can we ask for more?
I don't know if they would do something individual for a district, but I have not asked, so, you know, we could certainly inquire about that, but that is a pretty common amount. And the three-year term is also very common. We have about 25 university agreements right now. And so three years is typically what we do, and we.
Can I pause? So we have 25 university agreements right now with multiple colleges for student teachers and counseling. So I think we should make that very clear, that we have 25 right now. It was not just one. Okay, go on.
So we do so. Obviously, it's the surrounding area, there's some that do things remote, and so some of them are not in the area as well, so we're always looking to expand those partnerships. We have not had any direct conversations with the historic.
Historical black colleges?
The geography is challenging on that.
Right, but if we are able to do some possibly over the Zoom, I think that would be a great option, and I have been talking to some inner-city school board members, and they are, there's a lot of programs where these kids can, you know, the district can pay, there's programs where they can go visit these colleges, and it's some really fascinating programs that that we, I've been looking into. So I was just going to ask that question, and then I was just going to make sure that USC does know about the ban, and along with the other 25 colleges, I'm sure that they have no issues with our ban, and they're ready to come teach our district curriculum.
I really believe that if you live in Orange County or Los Angeles County, you know about our ban.
Okay, well, perfect. So I'm really, really happy, though, that out of this came out that we have 25, we have 25 colleges that are in our district. So, okay, perfect. I'm ready to vote.
Okay, with that said, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion approves, five plus our student board member. Okay, with that, looks like a adjournment. Tonight, we'll be closing in memory of a fourth grader who was an attendant at George Key School named Cynthia Seha Ruiz. Cynthia was a beautiful young lady. She was an inspiration, as she was a strong, such a strong fighter. She was loved immensely by those fortunate enough to have met her. She is missed, and we're going to close tonight in memory of Cynthia Seha Ruiz.
I'll second.
All right, motion adjourned. You second?
You made the motion.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, none opposed. We are adjourned. Next meeting, February 7th. Hope to see you all there.
9:07, time.